Sitting on Palmetto, which would wreck the aesthetics.
So, we've screened it and so when you, when we get to the parking level, we've actually used retail or gallery space, it can be space. We've tried to screen it to meet your streetscape goals for Palmetto to activate the streetscape. So you're actually not going to be like looking at two levels of parking. It's nicely screened in the facade so that there is a retail opportunity. It could be any number of things from rented out for a small cafe, some kind of opportunity space that's used, scheduled with different partners. There's lots of good models for us to help work with you on that. And then on this option here, as we look at the town commons, one of the differentiators is the large community program space. The large red space is actually pulled to the front. And so it's up along the front of the building, along Palmetto, and has a deck that runs along both the north and the west side. If you consider north directly up here, just plan north, we'll call it. And the community room is pulled to the forefront. It is connected with the passageway and a walkway that goes back to Hilton Way, where we can have services, catering trucks drop off, additional parking as well as additional program space on the outside.
Is there a way that you could have a separate entrance for the community room and the library be closed?
Yes, absolutely. And that's for the parking. And so every level actually can work independently. So each garage level, the gates could come down and be closed. The lobby in this case, because entrance off of Palmetto is really desired. So it's called a vertical lobby. So you walk in, there's an elevator, there's a nice stair that takes you up to the library. Each of the parking levels connects to it. And you can close off the library on the elevator and you can lock the doors. And so then you can just access the community hall on the top floor or you can also access the community hall at the top of Hilton Circle.
Now, what would be the capacity of the community room?
The capacity of the community room, I believe it's forty-five hundred square feet. And so it's quite large. It's right now divisible, the intent is for potentially divisible into three, into smaller spaces. A typical classroom is nine hundred square feet. And so if you wanted like round table seating for some kind of conference or some kind of workshop, it's typically fifteen square feet per person. And help me do the, that's three hundred people, right?
Okay, so, and is there a catering kitchen or anything in there?
Yeah, so there's support space included in there as well as a separate conference room on that floor as well.
Okay, so we could actually solve the dilemma of a place big enough to have two hundred people there?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah.
But speed is a different deal.
Yeah. Yeah, but again, multipurpose, flexible, break down to three separate classrooms and support different functions. As we look at the town's common, so this option for the massing, you can see how we've kind of wanted to make sure that the building of a scale doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood. Because even though we do have larger apartment buildings in the model, you can see to the right and to the south of us and directly what I would call, again, plan east. There's also smaller residential apart houses right next to us off of Hilton Way as well. And so breaking up the massing of the building by kind of making it this dogleg bend in it really created the opportunity to create this nice outdoor public space that's adjacent to the building and breaks up the massing. In this massing model, what we're looking at doing with the roofs is really angling them for optimum photovoltaic opportunity. And so that's why you can see that shed roof is greater on the south side and the east side and the west side so that we can actually look at incorporating photovoltaics into the building and looking at meeting sustainability goals the city might have. Vertical circulation is also important. As we look at this, you can see the separate shed roof on the library building stairs and elevator and how that's actually articulated and pulled out from the building to try and help wayfinding for people, oh, that's where the entrance is. That's how I get into the building is by going up that vertical circulation right there. And then you can see along the bottom of this slide is the precedent images that were selected by the community as ones that they liked and wanted us to use for inspiration for the architecture. And these views, the one on the left is as if you're right over Palmetto Avenue facing to the southeast and then scooping down a little bit lower, a lower vantage point more at street level. For the same option, the rendering on the right is actually the view from Hilton Circle as you're looking towards the west, towards the ocean. The pier would be just off to the right. And we did pencil in there just so you could see what the massing might be for a development across the street. You can see that little framework that we put in there, story poles, I think you might call them, just to give you a sense of what the zoning is and how when, when a development might happen in that area, how the city could work with that developer to really create those view corridors and those connections to the ocean. The view on the left is the view as you're going north on Palmetto, kind of right past Recology Site here on the right. And you can see how we've broken down the massing of the building by really kind of layering it and trying to fit the scale into the site there as it steps back up the hill. And then here's another axonometric looking at the building. And you can see how it's broken down, the roofs kind of step, and photovoltaics are being shown on this roof as well. Yes, Mike?
Is there a design feature that if a hotel goes in across the street, you could have a bridge from the hotel to the library for the forty-five hundred foot conference room?
So there is not a bridge, but if you look, and I don't know that our climate really necessitates a bridge in terms of weather, even though it's going to blustery tonight. But it's really not that far across the street. And one of the things we've indicated here is you look at the lighter color, the yellow color on the street there is being able to put pedestrian paving, texture, crosswalk there, connect over to that development. Have you been, is it the Portola Hotel in Monterey that has that lovely outdoor plaza, the parking lot? And it's designed, cars use it, but it's really designed for the pedestrian. This is something similar that we think would be a really great idea to collaborate and develop compatible developments across the street. So it's an, it's an easy walk and I don't know that it really warrants the bridge idea, but potentially. And then just another view, larger scale. Should I move a little faster, you guys? You can see here, so as I just mentioned, that level of the library from Palmetto, just because we're able to go down a half a level and up a half a level, it's not like you'd have two stories of parking on Palmetto Avenue. We're really able to conceal the parking. The downside is this parking is actually quite expensive. It does have to be mechanically ventilated because more than half of the volume of it is in the hill and we can't naturally ventilate it. And there's a lot of earthwork to make this happen. So that is the downside for the parking. But I think we've been able to incorporate it, integrate it into the hill quite nicely. And there's the other view. And so now moving on to the town commons, that's just summarizing the town commons here. Okay.
Question, sorry. Given this square footage, how many parking spaces do we need to have?
About eighty.
Eighty, thanks.
Yeah. So the next option is Canary Row. And here you can see we're still angling to get maximized views from the upper levels, both in the library space as well on the community hall program room space and trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood by breaking down the massing. And we basically have taken these two rectangles and kind of shifted them. That creates this nice outdoor nook, entry plaza into the development as well as gives us the opportunity then to use two massings for the building, even though it'll function and operate as one massing. When you actually are in the building, it will be hard to tell except for the volumes above you. But it will integrate and work as one. But it does help in terms of the scale of the neighborhood. In this option, another one of the differentiators is to move the community room to the back side. And so it's not up on the front side like we had on the other option. It actually has direct access and connection to an outdoor space off of Hilton Way. And it does have a deck and it does have views as well across to the ocean. Very similar, all the same elements in the two options in terms of parking, in terms of library space, in terms of program space. Just a different configuration. And here's the opportunity, we can show you kind of the two parking configurations. You can see the access off of Hilton Way, which is again, a story above, a parking story above, which is not a full height story of a occupied space. The ceiling to floor or ceiling to roof elevation of that is only twelve feet for a parking structure. And then on the one off of Palmetto, we drop down. And you can kind of see how we've turned that to fit onto the site, but then it also minimizes the facade of parking along Palmetto. And there's the vertical circulation lobby and elevator. And so the inspiration from this one is kind of a little bit more of the Canary inspiration as well as looking at the pier. I think Pacifica Pier has a really strong kind of base to it with the legs running down into the ocean. And that's one of the strategies we use to kind of minimize the massing of this on Palmetto. And you can see that in the top right image where we're looking at the building in that southeast direction from Palmetto Avenue and the axonometric on the left. And this one also has really nice opportunity to create some public plaza with potential stairs and some informal seating out along Hilton Way as you go up to that direct access, which we can get up Hilton Way on both of these to the library as well. And so pedestrians can actually walk up and into the library at the library level off of Hilton Way. And then the view from this one, from Hilton Circle, you can see how the massing is very compatible to the rest of the neighborhood, does not impede on the views from the apartment building behind it or to the side of it. And is it kind of sensitively nestled into the hill. And then on the left image, as you're looking north on Palmetto, how we've kind of taken the opportunity to create a base to the building. Again, inspiration kind of taken from the pier there and then build the building on top of that. A little bit more traditional, just with the gable roof shapes as opposed to the single shed. And there in that last, you can see that seating and the potential there for kind of that outdoor amphitheater, maybe informal program space.
And this obviously can have solar or something?
Yes, it can, thank you. Yeah, I think we highlighted it on the other one just because that was part of the rationale for that design. But absolutely, half of this roof can, is solar oriented as well. And then that's that view looking north. Okay, so I don't know if it's helpful for council and mayor to come down and view the boards or if you guys have enough with your handouts before we have the discussion or if there's questions.
Boards?
Mike, letter. Thanks for the comments. They look good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good letter.
Yeah.
And the public can come up and look at the boards as well.
Yes.
Like.
They are, but I would just CC them.
Okay.
I mean, you're directing it to them.
But then CC, yeah.
Because it's important that they all know.
And my strategy, I talked about with Mike, is let's put this pretty nice gentle thing up there. The work plan's adopted, lots of work, we want to help out. Let's do these things.
Right.
And in educating, let's make sure.
We should also CC it.
Yeah.
But it's like, yeah. He wasn't even there.
Oh, right. So, so then, so then if it goes nowhere, then nothing's done. So.
We should also boost the CC time.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Yeah.
Right.
No, I said we can boost the CC, I just, just the CC.
Yeah.
It's Tina. I need to talk to Tina.
Okay. Thought it all went well.
Yeah, it was good, it was fine. No, it was good, it was good for the section.
Then say yes.
Yeah, it went well. It went well, I don't know how.
Yeah, but I'm just telling you.
Thanks.
I wouldn't have asked the question if I didn't think of this.
Yeah, yeah.
And I haven't spoken to her.
Yes, please, Ellen.
Okay.
Neutral name?
No.
I have no idea what my password is for my city email.
Is it okay for me to ask this question?
Because he's real serious.
Yes. Are we all back? Okay, sorry. We're all back, so I guess it's questions from council first.
So I have a question, not about design, but about transportation. And has there been any thought gone into like maybe shuttles for youth to get to the after-school programs or any kind of transporta? I know that that was an issue for some. So I was just wondering if there was anything.
So, in terms of the scope of this project, it's really about the buildings and the programming inside the buildings and any programs or shuttling outside of that is a discussion to have, but not, hasn't been a part of this project.
So we're going to, we open it up to orals, right? But.
We will.
What would be the next step if, if, what would be the next step, I guess, Tina? Yeah, I know this is a study session, but.
Oh, so for the study session or the next steps in the project altogether?
After the study session, what would sort of be the next? I see what the timeline looks like, but in terms of like moving forward, I know there has to be some discussion about getting it on a ballot because.
Sure, sure, sure. So, so after the direction we received tonight, we're going to go back to the LAC in March and ask for their input on getting towards a final design. And then we will come back in April to the council and present a final design as well as potentially some results from community surveys regarding the library. And I don't know, it depends on how those turn out, but we may have a discussion for you as well at that point regarding future election dates.
Okay, thanks.
Mike?
I know, before we start amending designs or whatever, I'd like to hear public input.
We were asking for questions from the council first and then public input second.
So, based on these designs, do you have a rough estimate of what the bond would amount would be?
Yes.
Sorry, Tina.
It's okay.
I didn't know you moved out.
So you're, are you asking about the cost estimate or the bond amount?
Well, they're probably almost one in the same, right?
So, yeah, so the cost estimate is, in my staff report here. So the preliminary cost estimate is between forty and fifty-five million dollars.
If I could, Councilmember O'Neill, if I could add to that, I think it's important to acknowledge that in, in, you know, the, looking at funding, we'll also be seeking various grants or low-interest loans to help buy down that cost.
Thank you, I have some other stuff about design features. Do you want to hear them now or before the public input?
Question or comment?
It's a.
It's comments.
It's up to the, to the mayor.
Does anybody else have any questions? So why don't we go to the public and have public input? I'm not sure how we're going to do this. Just, they can come up, no yellow cards? Or?
If the public would like to comment, they should submit a yellow card and then they'd be invited up to the podium to provide their input for the record.
They don't have to, though it's a study session, so it's not formal. They don't have to.
Okay, would anyone like to come up and speak on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Ellen Ron first.
Hello, Ellen Ron, Library Foundation and just public person here. Both are wonderful designs and I'm really happy to see that you have children's area, outdoor children's area, because that was always a plus at Sanchez that the parents always talked about that they loved. And so both designs have that. Both look wonderfully workable and this is so exciting. And I have my own preferences, but you know what? It doesn't really matter. It's going to be a wonderful library. Thank you.
What was your preference?
Uh-oh. Doesn't matter. I would like every vote.
Okay. Come on, you guys all came out for this. No one else wants to get up?
No one wants to talk?
Okay, then with no other comments, we'll bring it back to council. Okay, now, Mike?
Oh, my God.
Okay. Okay, in regards to the Sanchez site, all right, I would say that on option A, okay, well, option B has no groups, there is the group study areas, but I would say that given the proximity to both Terranova and Ortega, that we might want to think about bigger or more group study areas. I just think that would be important because the recreation portion could very well be open after school hours and kind of almost become a de facto daycare. When you come back to discuss it also, I would like to see the, how much more it would be to do the possible future addition now. Because you know that will never get built unless we do it now. And I just, I just, you know, I'm not pessimistic, I'm just realistic, I think. And I don't know about having that future addition in the front like that because if I recollect right, this whole site that the city owns is quite substantial. I mean, like you could put, almost put housing in the back and still have the new library. So I would like to look at the future addition to possibly be in the rear or maybe you have U-shaped around. I definitely like the outdoor program area like we have, but I would like maybe a U-shaped type of library or something like that.
I would like to point out on the site plan, the red line that goes along the front of the building and veers down towards the bottom, that kind of backwards out there, that's actually an easement for a large storm drain, about a forty-eight inch storm drain. And so building over that without relocating it is not really very feasible. And that's helped to inform where the possible future addition should go because we can't really enclose that over where the storm drain runs. But then also trying to leave the rest of the site available for other development. That was some of the LAC's input.
And what is the current thinking these days on the automated material return systems? How are they looking? Are they smaller? Are they, you know, they're more compact looking than maybe we've seen in, say, for example, the one I'm familiar with is in Millbrae and that was done more than 10 years ago? Fifteen-ish, 10, 12 years ago, yeah.
So the Half Moon Bay Library probably has the newest ones. So if you're in the area, for sure, just ask staff if you could take a peek at it. I'm sure they'd be happy to show it to you. But it's my understanding that they, those systems now are available. They're pretty customizable to the space that you have available for them. And the Half Moon Bay one is, you know, I've been, I've been in the workroom. I've seen it. It's fairly compact. It just takes up, you know, one small portion against the wall.
Yeah, thank you.
Deirdre.
Just a couple of final thoughts. One of the things that the Half Moon Bay Library, we didn't mention, I don't think, was bike locker, bike space for spite. And they have skateboarder space on there, but I don't actually think there's too many skaters around here or that that would be something we need to lock up. But one thing I love about the Half Moon Bay Library is, and people who spend a lot of time in libraries, especially librarians already know this, that libraries are not like shush anymore. That the library is, in Half Moon Bay, a place where my kids play. And they have these really cool things on the wall where you turn in a crank and you can hit the ball, goes all the way through down to the bottom. And it's a play space for children, too. And I like that because it's not just for the kids, it's also for adults where you can measure yourself and see how high you are. It's, it's not just child size, it's adult size. And I, and I know that's further down the line, but to have things like, like that they have in Half Moon Bay that are, you know, tactical things that are not just books and stuffed animals.
Okay.
Can I just agree with what Deirdre just said about the bike locker? So it's really important. And I do think that there's skaters. So if you could have room for their, to lock up their skateboards, that'd be great, too.
I like the look of the town commons because, because I like the different roof lines and the angles. Not quite so boring as the other design. As far as massing, I like both of them. I don't think if you have a J-Team dance that it's going to cause that many problems because they're not often. It's not like they have one every week. So every once in a while, they have them. It just, I don't think it would bother the neighbors that much to have some team.
That was just an example. I mean, there's going to be other events there that would be next door to the neighbors. And I'm just concerned about the neighbors on that narrow street listening to the band, even for the, like, the dinner dances the parents at the PTOs have, they have a band.
So are you looking for direction from, on both, on these, like, one decision this evening, sort of direction-ish? Or is it just we're hearing it?
I think that was sufficient. That was very helpful.
And thank you. Thank you so much for all the work that all of you have done on this. Thank you.
And thank you to the entire committee. It is a constant work in progress and a lot of outreach and a lot of meetings. And it's come a long ways from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Back to where I need to be. It's 7:04 and I'm going to call to order the regular meeting. If people want to talk, feel free to go outside and talk to each other. But we are calling this meeting to an end. The roll call.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Proton Martin.
Here.
Mayor Vatterlos.
Here. We'll do the roll, I mean, I'm sorry, salute to the flag led by Mary Beer.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And is there a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Thank you. There are no special presentations. We're moving to the consent calendar. And is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the consent or any public who would like to speak on anything on the consent? I have no cards.
I move that we accept the consent calendar as stated.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that's approved five to nothing. We will move on to oral communications. So not, not too many cards tonight. You can speak for three minutes. The first card is Janine Menger, followed by Ann Hertz and Suzanne Moore.
Good evening, City Council and Honorable Mayor. My name is Janine Menger. I own a home on Edgemare Avenue and I've lived in Pacifica about eight years. I'm a property taxpayer. Just wanted to emphasize that point in what I have to say to you. Two things I'd like to see happen simultaneously. One is I would like immediately to see the ordinance passed that was discussed at last council meeting to, so that the, we have the tools to manage the blight that RVs and the homeless have brought to our town. But secondly, I would like to see the RV park committee begun immediately in the normal course of business. Getting something done for our RV owners of all kinds is an important part of that equation. And I support people who own RVs, but through the normal course of business. So please, I implore you to pass the ordinance. I have posted something on Nextdoor in my time remaining, which is a couple of minutes. I'll try to read it fairly quickly. It felt at the last city council meeting to me that the ordinance was being sort of held hostage by the proposed RV park project. That was just my opinion and my impression. It may not be the case. We need this, or this ordinance now to protect the properties and lives that we property taxpayers pay for. Those have been my main points. So what I wrote on, on Nextdoor was, "I think the amount of division on this issue is an indication we need to pass the ordinance now and fix the bad issues we endure first and foremost. Pass the ordinance and then we continue the long-term discussions at council about how to implement an RV parking site and how it will be paid for and maintained and who wants it in their backyard. In the meantime, the word gets out on the internet, we are not a good place to bring your RV because right now what's being said, we are. I like that we are, we lose that reputation and that we have laws that we enforce backing all that up. I like that. And that we are discussing longer-term compassionate approach to homeless people and will have something in place when the normal government process gets it done. I like that as well." So in the meantime, my property near Oceana and 24 Hour Fitness, near the Chevron Station, gets retaken by the people who pay, who pay the property taxes and bring something to the community. So I think I'm not going to read the rest of this here. You've gotten my point. I sure hope that you take the ordinance very seriously and that as a property taxpayer, my strong opinion, pass it now, please, and that I'll support this RV parking thing that Mike and everybody was proposing. I don't know, the archery area or somewhere you were talking about lots of options. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
And Hits, sorry, I said the wrong, Suzanne Moore and then Carolyn Harmio.
Hi, I'm wearing a different hat here than as a library advisory committee member. I'm talking as a resident of Pedro Point. And my husband and I have lived in Pacifica for almost 30 years and raised our family here. And we moved here because of the charm and the sense of community. We've become aware that the city council has approved a budget to contract with consultants to complete a general plan update, which includes the development of the Sharp Park, a Sharp Park specific plan. As you know, Pedro Point also has various areas zoned for commercial and commercial recreation development. And we would like to see these developed in a cohesive, thoughtful way. And right now, there's a whole bunch of projects going in that are one-off, kind of crammed into tiny little spaces and with a lot of parking variances. And it's, it's very concerning. So we have already been seeing some major negative shifts in the area with increased traffic. Parking on the weekends has become very problematic as people avoid the paid parking at the beach. They park in Pedro Point instead. And there are definitely strained relationships between neighbors because of all the variances that keep getting requested. And it's pitting neighbors against neighbors. So we did put together a neighborhood plan in 1995 that we think still holds true. I mean, it was never officially adopted, but we would like to see that as a guideline. And we are requesting a moratorium on more commercial permits until we have a more cohesive plan. So, thank you.
Suzanne Moore, Carolyn Harmio, followed by Deirdre Crow.
Good evening. At the February 11th city council, Adonika Shaw Porter, team member of our county's healthcare for the homeless and farmworkers health, read a portion of a position statement drafted February the 7th and addressed to Pacifica City Council. I will now read this statement for, from our county experts in its entirety. "Pacifica City Council, we write on behalf of the co-applicant board of the San Mateo County Healthcare for the Homeless and Farmworker Healthcare Program. As local community leaders, we oversee a federal program managed by San Mateo County to support the homeless and farmworker communities, and we have a special interest in the coast side. Homelessness is a serious, ongoing social concern in the Bay Area. With the lack of affordable housing, more and more individuals and families are being forced out of their current homes and either move from the area or become homeless. Many of the Bay Area residents now experiencing homelessness are stable community members who can simply no longer afford the high cost of housing. Furthermore, more and more San Mateo residents are turning to their vehicles for a place to stay and sleep. The 2017 San Mateo County One Day Homeless Count found that over 65% of unsheltered homeless individuals were living or sleeping in their cars and RVs. That was a 34% increase from 2015. Even though the total count of unsheltered homeless persons in the county was, has continued to drop, the number and percentage of individuals living in their vehicles has increased. Homeless persons living in their vehicle face an increased risk of trauma, health issues, and displacement similar to other unsheltered homeless persons. Continuous moving of location makes accessing health services and other service, service support services difficult. To that end, the healthcare of the homeless and farmworkers healthcare program generally supports the safe parking programs that provide safe, secure locations for vehically housed homeless individuals and families to park and sleep. These programs further facilitate the provision of outreach and essential services to the families and individuals involved. To that end, the San Mateo County Healthcare for the Homeless and Farmworkers Program opposes efforts to ban overnight parking, and they're presenting that countywide. Without holistic approaches to address the underlying issues, the individuals involved are simply put at a greater risk for harm, health issues, and permanent displacement. Thank you. The Board of the San Mateo County Healthcare for the Homeless and Farmworkers, signed by Brian Greenberg, Ph.D. I request our city council listen to the expert advice of the Pacifica Resource Center and the healthcare, healthcare for the homeless and farmworkers and draft policy consistent with their position statements. Thank you. And I'll give this letter to Sarah.
Thank you. Carolyn Harmio, Deirdre Crow, and Gloria Stofan.
Good evening, Council. My name is Carolyn Harmio. I'm a Pacifica homeowner. Thank you for listening. Last council meeting, you had over more than 20, 20-plus speakers speaking in favor of a safe parking program for people living in RVs. Members of the Pacifica Housing for All, we were heartened by many positive remarks that the, that you made concerning that program. And we were particularly interested in these suggestions put forth by Councilman O'Neal. We want you to know that we are eager to work with the city in any capacity to study the feasibility of using the council chambers, any, any site that the city can possibly lease for rotational shelter for the unhoused. We understand that there is over $300,000 in the housing trust fund. We would like to know if this money can be used to implement programs to help ease the housing crisis here in Pacifica. I would like to see a volunteer task force set up to further study the ways the city can address the needs of the unhoused. I feel that a task force made up of representatives from the city council, the unhoused, supervise, supervisor horsley staff, faith communities, and Pacifica Housing for All would be a good start for the city leaders to demonstrate their willingness to work for a solution. Imposing a ban on overnight street parking for people living in their vehicles would be the easy way out, but it would not be a compassionate solution. It would not really help the people in this city who are struggling. The city's most vulnerable residents are the ones who need the best efforts from all of us. I thank you for listening.
Deirdre, followed by Gloria, and then Matt McVale.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Crow and I've called Pacifica my hometown since 1954. Here for a monthly update on the Pacifica Ocean Shore Railroad Passenger Car 1409. We'd like to come every month and give you a progress report. Our rubbish sale, which we hold most, almost every month, all the funds from that rubbish sale go to funding the restoration of the car. And we're having one March 8th and 9th. And then on, we're having a construction team meeting, which is, we're very excited about, on March 16th at the museum from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The, another update we're having will be March 25th. We'll present it here at the council meeting. And so we're also going to be having a Pacifica cheese contest. And the cheese contest is April 6th, and everyone's invited to join. The public, it's open to the public at 4:30, but the contestants are invited at 3:00 to present their, their form and their cheese, either an appetizer or dessert. And our form is listed on the website, pacificahistory.org. Thank you.
Gloria, then Matt, then Chris Redfield.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Stofan, homeowner and resident of Pacifica. I first want to thank councilmembers Deirdre Martin, Mary Beer, Councilman Mary Beer, and council, city council member Mike O'Neil for taking the time and coming up with many good brainstorming ideas for the safe parking of RVs at the last city council meeting. City council members, the need to work closely with the Pacifica Resource Center is so important when it comes to taking the first step and coming up with solid solutions to the RV issue. The possibility of a task force sounds like a good idea. It can be created especially when seeking funding from the county and from nonprofits. And it should include county supervisors, city council people, as well as a staff liaison. Please take this into consideration. You are not just kicking the can down the road. You are taking the time to make good, educated decisions. As I stated at the last city council meeting, a person has a human right, a right to live with dignity and respect. Thank you.
You. Matt, followed by Chris Redfield and Joanne Gold.
My name is Matt McVale. I live at Shutter Cove and I also own and operate the bike shop in the back of Lindemar Valley. I went to the PBNR Commission Public Workshop last month, dealing with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan for Pacifica, and was really happy to see all the progress they're making. Lots of great input and ideas from the public, the Parks Commission, and the consultants putting it all together. We're looking forward to seeing a lot of problem areas be addressed, like access to the Devil's Slide Trail, the many dangerous intersections around town, in addition to the creation of safe routes for kids to ride their bikes to school. I was also encouraged to see support amongst the commission for the Pacifica Bike Park Project. A bike park, similar to a skate park, is an area set aside for developing BMX and mountain biking skills. It would include dirt tracks with jumps, berms, rollers, and other obstacles for all ages and skill levels of riders. Some of you may be aware, there's been a long-term grassroots effort to get an official city bike park built here in Pacifica. When we first formed a bike park committee almost 15 years ago, it was a relatively new concept that has since exploded in popularity. The Santa Cruz area now has, I think, five or six bike parks. San Francisco has one, and there are many others in the East Bay, North Bay, San Jose, Tahoe, and all over California and the world. There are quite a few families here in Pacifica who drive their kids all over the place to these parks and would love to just spend the weekend at home here in Pacifica and let the kids ride their bikes or take the bus to the bike park. We're looking forward to working with you and the PBNR Commission in the future to see if we can finally get this done for Pacifica kids. Also, the original impetus for the committee was the decision to not allow kids to ride their BMX bikes in the skate park due to some ambiguous language in the hazardous recreational activities law. That bill was amended several years ago to clarify that bicycles are expressly covered under the bill, and there is no added liability to adding bicycles or to allowing bicycles the same access as skateboards, scooters, roller blades, roller skates, wheelchairs, or any other wheeled device that is already allowed in the park. We'd like to see the city address this issue and possibly change the skate park rule so kids don't have to worry about beginning an adversarial relationship with the police at a tender young age just because they want to emulate Olympic athletes and hang out with their friends. In a time when parents struggle to keep kids off their phones and video games, it seems a shame to devote public resources to actively discouraging healthy outdoor fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, and then Joanne.
Good evening, staff, council. Goals: a healthy and compassionate community, maintaining a safe community. Those are part of Pacifica's goals. The RV debate continues, pushed down the road again to goal-setting on March 9th. This is yet another passionate issue for Pacifica. I again strongly support the city manager's ordinance recommendations. Perhaps the recommended four-month education and grace period can be extended to six months. This would go along with Anita Reese's hope, and I quote, "The city would not enact the ordinance until spring, when the county expects to release heat funds." At the last council meeting, John Keener again spoke to enact enforcement in concert with some type of safe parking program. Many of you know, Mr. Keener and I are polar opposites on many issues, yet we can meet on common ground on this issue. Safe parking can only be privately operated. Pacifica has no money. As stated, PRC will continue to be a partner and will help people navigate any new rules or programs resulting from council's direction. This should not be an easy decision. We are not the first city to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Gold. And that's the last card I have.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm Joanne Gold from Pedro Point, and I'm sure you can probably all guess what I'm here to talk about. And I want to thank you in advance for your indulgence. I think you all know that, I think all of the city council members have heard from members of the Pedro Point community and that our community has been urging the council to include a neighborhood-specific plan for Pedro Point in the general plan update. We ask this knowing that a neighborhood-specific plan was already approved for the Sharp Park District. Both Pedro Point and Sharp Park have significant areas of commercial zoning and are the two neighborhoods that can best drive Pacifica's future growth and economy as a visitor-serving destination. Recently, in response to our request for the neighborhood-specific plan, I and many of my neighbors have been asked, "Do we think we're special?" and "If we thought, there should be a plan for every neighborhood?" But I don't think that's the right question. I think the question is, why wouldn't we want a plan for Pedro Point so that we can realize its potential as a vibrant and thriving destination that's compatible with our very unique coastal environmental assets? We always say that our environment is our economy, but any successful economic plan must be guided by a clear vision, long-range planning, and continuous commitment to that vision. In the absence of a vision and a commitment to a plan, we end up things like Ocean View Public Storage Units and Beachfront Taco Bell and Panda Express. And this cannot be the vision that the Chamber of Commerce had in mind when referring to Pacifica as a coastal gem worth uncovering. I know I want better for Pacifica and I want better for my Pedro Point neighborhood, but in the absence of a local community plan for Pedro Point, we all lose the opportunity to define that vision together. And until we have a plan, I really want to ask for a moratorium on all new development projects on Pedro Point. I think it's also worth noting that the logo for the, for the city of Pacifica, actually I brought it as a, as a handout, but it's on the screen behind you. Take a look at that logo. It's a picture of Pedro Point and Lindemar Beach. And surely a destination that is so embedded in Pacifica's identity is worthy of a plan that will deliver on that potential. I look forward to participating in the goal-setting session on March 9th, and I really want to thank you all for your very considered and thoughtful responses. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the public comment. Anyone else wanting to speak? Okay, we'll move along then to council communications. No lights. Light?
I get to go first. Oh, sorry, Mary. Please. It's been not as busy a couple of weeks, but I'm pleased to report that I've been able to complete my orientation meetings with department heads and have some tours of facilities. So that included a wastewater tour with Lewis Sun, and it was very enlightening. I appreciated seeing the plant and learning about how it operates. It is truly an amazing facility. Everyone should go have a tour at that facility and see the science that's going on in Pacifica every single day. I also had a meeting with and toured the police station with Chief Stidle, and that was also very enlightening. And I had an opportunity to meet with Director Perez at Park, Beaches, and Recreation and learn more about those offerings in that department. In terms of meetings, Economic Development Meeting, and I attended the Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame Dinner on Saturday night. I've also received many communications from residents of Pedro Point on the topics that have been discussed this evening and continue to receive inquiries from concerned residents about RV parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Okay, I'll go. So the Age Friendly Task Force is wrapping up its focus groups this week with two groups. One, the ages of 50 to 59 years old, and then service providers. So the Center for Age Friendly Excellence, which is CAFE, is looking forward to gathering the data and presenting that to us. The task force will then create the findings and recommendations report, and we can see where that takes us. I'm really excited about that project. I also attended a briefing with the wastewater facility and with Lewis Sun. I spent the majority of the day with him, and then we toured the facility along with Councilmember Beckmeyer. It really is amazing there. Like, it, everyone should go see it, and maybe some of our schools can actually schedule some field trips to go there. I also want to thank to thank Lewis Sun specifically for his outward thinking when it comes to the possibilities of creating a waste station at the facility there. I just really appreciate that our department heads are outward-thinking folks, so thank you so much for that. I attended the Pacifica Historical Society screening of "In the Land of My Ancestors" and viewed the First Coast Hiders exhibit. That was wonderful. I attended my first emergency preparedness meeting, where Lewis Sun was also present, so we learned a lot from Lewis this past couple of weeks. I spent a half-day at an orientation for the Peninsula Clean Energy, and I have also had lots of communications with the Pedro Point folks. I actually went and had a meeting with them on Sunday, so I appreciated hearing from all of them. And I met with the Pacifica Bike Park Coalition. I was really happy to see them here tonight, speaking so eloquently, and I look forward to seeing what we can do together.
Thank you. Mike?
Let's see. I attended Commute.org. I'm going to the council race on to that, and I have some very good news in that they had the list of the fifteen schools in the county that have the highest percentage of vehicle and kid collisions. And these fifteen schools are responsible for thirty percent of the accidents, and I was happy to see none from Pacifica were there. There was three from Daly City, but none from Pacifica. They are having something that some people might find interesting. You can email me, and I'll forward you the email, and it's walk audits to take and show you how to implement audits and to see the percentage of your kids that walk to school, and their motto is "A walkable community is a prosperous and healthy community," and they're doing it at three different schools so you could actually watch somebody do the walk audit. And I thought that was just kind of interesting because I'd never heard of one before. I attended, along with Sue Beckmeyer, Sue Vaterlaus, the sports dinner. I attended the Council of Cities, which had an interesting presentation on the problems of the Cal-Purs Retirement System, how some cities are dealing with it, and how we got into the present situation, et cetera. I thought that was interesting. Pacifica Democrats, I attended that, and that was very fascinating. They had a Holocaust survivor there, and it was really good to see thirty-two kids from Terranova come. And even though the speaker was eighty years old, he held their attention, and I thought that was really, really good. And it was, he was an infant, basically, when the Holocaust started. His years, formative years, up until he was about five or six, was spent in the Warsaw Ghetto, and then how his mother spirited him out and dyed their hair so they didn't look Jewish, they looked Aryan, and it was really interesting. I also attended the Historical Society's Alone exhibit, and I'm quite proud to say I had somebody do some work for me at the house, and he told me that he was digging in his backyard, and he actually found an Alone grinding bowl. And I put him in touch with the Historical Society, and the grinding bowl is now a part of the exhibit. So that I thought was kind of interesting. Economic Development Committee meeting I attended, and I also, through my position as Vice President of the Union, I was up in Sacramento, and we were lobbying legislatures to pass some bills up there. So I got to have one-on-one time with both Kevin Mullen and Jerry Hill. And one thing Jerry Hill told that was a little bit concerning was the fact that the state just had a Democratic Caucus, and the state comptroller came and visited them, and he was quite concerned that since, in January of this year, the state of California had $1.8 billion less in revenue than it did the previous January, which is going to, will filter down to us and the schools especially. But they are hopeful that because of the tax laws passed last year and the $10,000 limit for local taxes and state taxes, that, you know, people, there was no urgency to pay your taxes before December 31st. So they're going to look at the number at April 15th to see if they collect the same revenue. Otherwise, 1.8 billion, if you hit that every year, that's quite a chunk of money out of the state coffers that we're waiting to see what happens. But it was very interesting. It was enjoyable to see Kevin and his thirteen-month-old boy twins are walking. Now, poor guy.
Your turn.
I also attended the Historical Society's beautiful presentation of the, part of the kickoff for the celebration of the Alone seventy-fifth anniversary, where are we?
Two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
Two-hundred-and-fiftieth. Seventy-fifth, that was the City of Pacifica, right? Could be my company.
We're sixty-three.
It's my company, then. The Asia Group. So, that was so beautiful. There was a nine-minute video that was shown there by the woman, I can't even remember her name, but she's from Berkeley, and if you get a chance to, what was the film called?
Yesterday's Land of My Ancestors.
Land of My, In the Land of My Ancestors.
The Land of My Ancestors.
And it was amazing to hear and see what went on, like, right here, and that this woman found it so interesting that she, you know, rallied up some money to put together this film. It was really neat, and what was also pretty neat was that there was a woman in the video who was singing a Native American song, "Land of Her Ancestors," and she sung that same song for us at a climate collaborative in San Mateo County to kick it off a couple weeks ago, and really it was kind of to talk about, on whose shoulders do we stand? So it just all kind of comes back full circle, and I just wanted to say that aloud to remind everyone here who's talking about, you know, homeless issues and RV issues and whose land is this, and let's just remember whose land it really is, and on whose shoulders do we stand. And also, the Historical Society, I'm not going to get this date right, but they're doing, for lack of a better term, like a Taste of Alone. Is that March?
March 31st.
Thirty-first. And there's probably only a few tickets left at this point, so, yeah. And, but that sounds like a really neat experience. Thanks to the Historical Society for doing that. Also, I attended OZPAC Open Space Advisory Committee and the Golden Gate National Rec and was there to talk a little bit about, and the parks, was there to talk about what's going on with all their different parklands. And one of the things that's going on, I think it's this weekend next, is up on Sweeney Ridge, they're demoing the, there's two buildings up there that, I think they're old Nike buildings, and they're full of graffiti. And just so you're aware, that's happening up there, and there's no sort of waste that's going to be coming out of that. There's no need to worry, no need to call the police or anything if you do see any of that stuff going on. And then I just, oh, also, we attended a mayor's meeting today with Mayor Vaterlaus and city manager, and we talked, they invited Bart and SFO to talk to sort of about issues, relational issues to Bart and SFO, and of course, we ended up on the topic of airport noise, and they're aware. And also Bart and there was, not really directly related to us, but some sort of sidebar conversations about homelessness and how it is all related. And then I just want to remind everyone that Earth Day is being celebrated here in Pacifica on April 27th. If you don't have your site where you're going to work, check out Pacifica Beach Coalition, Pacific Beach Coalition's website, they've changed their name. And if you have a site that you would like worked on, you can also let us know, and we'll staff that area for you. We'll get volunteers to, we can do painting, weeding, you know, trash pickup, planting, so any place you think needs a little bit of love, let us know, and we'll help you out. And that's all I have. Thanks.
I went to the Skyline College Appreciation Reception, which is always nice. They have music, and it's in their art gallery, which is beautiful, and they have different exhibits in there all the time. It's a nice event. I also attended the City and County Association of Governments Legislative Meeting, and we had Senator Weiner come, and he says there are 3.5 million deficit in housing in the state of California. So he has Senate Bill 50, which provides for housing along transportation corridors. He did actually define transportation corridors for us, and it mainly has to do with buses, rail, et cetera, with large, often-used transportation, buses every fifteen minutes. So I don't believe Highway One is part of his plan. He did say that a lot of the cities were opposed to that because his original bill said there would be no communications from the cities and that they would be allowed to build up to twelve stories on transportation corridors, and he said he's changed it quite a bit. Then the City and County Association of Governments Regular Board Meeting, and they did finally approve the Highway 101 managed lanes, and that will be developed very shortly. They have most of the money for it already. It'll be managed by CKAG itself. That was a big issue with the others on the peninsula. Went to the Chinese real estate installation and again saw Scott Weiner the very next night, so talked to him again about housing. Pacificans Care Champions Meeting, that was just about their upcoming, they'll Speak Easy Night, which is their fundraiser, and they are fundraising for other nonprofits in Pacifica. Council of Cities Program, Sports Hall of Fame, Today the Mayor's, and we talked about housing also, homelessness, airport. And tomorrow we have our first Home for All kickoff meeting, Mary, myself, and city manager, and we'll bring that back to you as soon as we've gone through that first process of Home for All. Thank you. And staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vaterlaus, and council members. Couple comments. Several of the council members mentioned the Historical Society's events related to the Alone Portola Celebration Event, and I wanted to add to that with a few other highlights. There's a lot of activity gaining steam now for the Alone Portola Heritage Trail 250th Anniversary Event, and the city has a webpage that is now active that describes all of the planning that is happening and events that are going to be scheduled, so that can be found through the city's homepage and link to that. In addition to the Historical Society events, another promotional endeavor was filming for a Doug McConnell Open Roads episode, and last week I had the opportunity to join representatives from the Historical Society, which includes Ms. Crowe, who I believe is still in the audience, representatives from the county, from the San Mateo County Historical Association, as well as state parks, to talk with Doug, and during filming of the episode, to introduce the staging area, that is a parking lot, that, small parking lot that the city is working on design of at the end of Fassler Avenue, as well as, you know, as a staging area to get to Sweeney Ridge as part of the trail, the Heritage Trail, as well as up at the top of Sweeney Ridge, and discussing with Doug that event that's coming up. So it was an exciting, it was an exciting day that when the episode airs in the spring or summer will really help promote the event as well as promote Pacifica. And I'll stop there in terms of those events. The other item I wanted to mention was, last week we held a staff leadership off-site meeting, which really focused on the core areas were on modern public engagement strategies, and for that session brought in one of the leading experts in public engagement, Ed Everett, who's a retired city manager from Redwood City, and he's with the Pepperdine University Public Engagement Davenport Institute as well. And we had a great session in the morning studying public engagement strategies, and then in the afternoon, we also revisited the city's communication strategies as well as social media policy, and hope to be, you know, making some tweaks to how we are getting information out and informing residents and how we are using social media. So, more to come on those. So, two highlights.
Okay, then, the public hearing item, which, there is no action on that public hearing item. Are we still hearing a staff report or not?
No, no staff report.
Okay, that, no action is required as the withdrawal has, the-
Appeal's been withdrawn.
Appeal has been withdrawn. So, on to consideration, item number six.
Mayor Vaterlaus, members of the Pacifica City Council. I'm Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines Jr., and I'm here to present to you the Long-Term Financial Plan Update for fiscal year 2018 through 2028. So tonight, we start the 2019-20, 2019-2020 budget process, and it always starts with a sort of a long-range look as to where we are and where we're going as far as our revenues and expenditures. It also gives you, the council, an opportunity to have sort of an overview of our financial tendencies and how our current situation here in Pacifica, residential and commercial, and how that impacts our financials going forward. The forecast that you're about to see has revenue and expenditure projections. The scenarios that you're seeing are what I consider the most likely, yet conservative, so there's not an optimistic or pessimistic. This is what I think is actually going to happen. It's a ten-year forecast, and starting with our current year, and this forecast is only for the general fund. The general fund makes up the bulk of our budget, and it is the, it's the fund that gets most of the attention, and so we definitely focus on the general fund. My assumptions, this is for you to, for you to ultimately judge, but I believe they're all very transparent. And so as far as our rationale, the revenues and expenditures, the expectations are based on conservative expectations, as I mentioned earlier, based on a most likely scenario. The revenue assumptions do not anticipate new developments such as any new residential, commercial, hotels, unless a development is already approved for construction. And I will speak a little bit about the potential of commercial activities later in this report. The impact of the CPI is also factored in to this report, the latest CPI, which is about 4.5%. We were also doing estimates for property taxes. These estimates, from the departmental perspective, were garnered based on the activities that the departments have gone through for the last eight months, and also with the discussions with the directors, department directors themselves, to let me know where they are and where they intend to go. And also, the impact of nine, actually, yeah, nine of our ten labor groups are already baked into these numbers. So this is kind of hard to see, which is why I passed out an extra document for council so you can see these numbers with a little more clarity. And we'll talk about the assumptions behind these numbers here in a second, but this is the ten-year forecast. As you can see, starting in 2018-19, we actually have a surplus, which we will talk about in the next item in more detail. But moving into 1920, we already have a million-dollar gap to close in order to bring a balanced budget to you. And that's before we've received any proposals from the departments. That's where we start. That's where we start. If the trend as far as revenues and the trend as far as expenditures continues, that deficit or that effort to close the budget will balloon all the way up to about 3.6 million that you'll see in '27, '28. So even though we have these deficits appearing on this plan, the city manager and along with his team will endeavor to bring you a balanced budget every year. But what this, what this financial picture shows you is that the efforts to balance the budget will become greater every year. And so let's talk a little bit about the assumptions. So I pulled out our biggest revenues, and so the property taxes, so the long-term forecast for our property taxes, and this is, this is 35% of the general fund revenues. And so the long-term forecast for property taxes is that we're anticipating that they'll grow about 2% annually. We've gone with 2% annually for the last four years, and we've been relatively close. Sometimes it'll jump up to four, sometimes it'll jump up to four and a half. But I know at some point during the next few years, we will, we will somehow, some way be affected by a, what they call an economic correction, some downturn, and so I'd rather stay at a nice level, 2%, than show you 4% and 5% every year and not have that materialize. So in this particular case, with all these estimates, I'd rather be wrong in the sense that he went too low. I'm okay with that. Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask a process question. Do you want questions as the presentation goes on or wait to the end?
It's a conversation, councilman, whatever you want to do.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Yes.
So, okay.
All right, and then the next revenue stream I wanted to talk about was retail sales tax. And so retail sales tax is sort of a direct reflection, reflection of our commercial profile here in Pacifica. And the retail sales tax is about 6% of our revenues. I've got those taxes increasing about a half a percent every year. I've been with you for a little over four years right now, and those taxes have gone up very little. They were 2 million when I got here, or 2.1 million when I got here, they're about 2.2 million now. And again, that's a direct reflection of our commercial profile. The TOT, the transient occupancy tax, which reflects the hotels and the hoteliers that we have here in Pacifica, that's about 5% of our revenues, and going forward, I'm estimating the TOTs will grow by about a half a percent. Now, what we're seeing this year is that the actual base TOT is down because we've got some construction going on in one of the hotels or a couple of the hotels. However, that gap has been filled by our short-term rental activities. And so it's interesting to see the offset, so it'll be nice to see both streams sort of working at full stream once we get these, once we get the construction settled in all the hotels.
Lorenzo, will the, will the tax be expanded to the other platforms of the short-term rentals?
Yes, so what I, what I, what sort of the next steps for me are to reach out to VRBO. Actually, we have reached out to VRBO, and I'm waiting for a call from their tax department. And so I want to see if I could establish voluntary collection agreements with sort of the bigger entities in the market, and that will cover most of the short-term rentals. At that point, I'll then sit back and we'll probably find a third-party firm that will come in and basically check up on all the entities that we have these agreements with. So those are sort of the big three. We have, if you go back to your long-term financial plan, there are, there is one category of revenues, and that's our department program revenues, it's about 36%, and that is growing as well in the current year. And I've got that growing, and we'll talk about all the factors, but it's growing by a number of factors, and the CPI being one of, one of those factors, the department's preference is another factor, and again, we'll talk about those in a second. And speak of the devil, here's the next slide. And so all of my assumptions are laid out on Slide 8. And so with property taxes growing at 2%, retail sales tax is growing at half a percent, TOT at half a percent, franchise tax, which is the taxes that we levy on Comcast and some of the other big entities here, I have that growing at 1% as that actually is coming in. Yes, sir?
The League of Cities is in the process, the FCC is considering a measure where the franchise tax would go away from the cities, and I know the League of Cities is, because I was talking to Jerry, not Jerry, Marty, at Channel 26, and FCC is starting to try to do what they did years ago and to eliminate the franchise fees for cities. So that is something that...
I would say that that's something that we wouldn't support.
Well, the League of Cities is going to be fighting it.
Great.
But it's just kind of a, you know, it's something that we need to, you know, 1% is 1% when we're going to be checking the couches to get change here, you know, to balance the budget, so.
So that franchise tax represents about 1.7 million to our general fund, so about 5%. And so if the League of Cities needs, League of Cities needs any assistance from Pacifica, let me know.
They fought it back once, but that was under a different administration, so.
Okay, all right, yeah, we'll definitely want to keep an eye on that. Our business licenses, I have that going up by 0.5%. Again, it's a reflection of our commercial, commercial status. Utility users tax, 1%. And then there's a host of service charges and other revenues and transfers in, but the service charges are for things like construction permits, license, other licensing and permits, so the beach and community center-related services and recreational fees. The VLF, the vehicle license fees, are also in that other sort of department program category. And so the maximum growth I have on some of those revenues are, it's up to 4.5%, which is the change in the CPI, and it sort of varies, some of those, some of those grants are at, or some of those dollars are at zero. It just depends on sort of the conversation between myself and the department director and what they're comfortable with. As far as the other revenues, the intergovernmental revenues, fines and forfeitures, I have those tracking at zero, and if they go up, that's great, but I'm not necessarily counting on those growing right now. Transfers in are just sort of mechanisms that we use to allow the general fund to be reimbursed for, from other, from other funds. If you look on your, your long-term financial plan, you'll see we have 2.297 million in transfers in, and those dollars are coming in from other funds, well, about 600,000 to 700,000 of those dollars are coming in from other funds to help pay the general fund for the use of general fund personnel. On the expense side, so our three, three largest drivers of expenses are salaries, pension costs, and healthcare. Given that all but one of Pacifica's labor contracts is settled, we went with a increase of 2% annually for salary and health insurance, and we also made sure that the increases for the incentive pays were also built into our, our estimates here. We have other significant costs, which are the rise in our pensions, and, and, you know, as I've mentioned to council many times, I know I'm sounding like a broken record, but going back to December 2016 when PERS lowered their discount rate and made the pensions more expensive for the locals, and so that is still impacting us. We've incorporated those changes into this long-term plan. I have a grid that's coming up later, which is gonna talk some more about that, and, and we'll, actually, we're going to talk a little bit more about it now. And so we're expecting our pension expenses to rise between 400 and 800,000 over the next 10 years annually. It will creep up at a higher pace here in the next coming years, and then it will tail off as the years go on. And as I've mentioned, we've incorporated these things into our estimate, and we're also, we'll be coming back to you with a more detailed discussion on pensions as we get through, or as we go through the budget process. And this is needed, and it's also something that the San Mateo County Grand Jury would like us to do.
Lorenzo, when you come back with the pension discussion, could you include in that the mechanisms of, is it, it's a 512 trust?
Yeah.
And how it, how it works?
Yes.
And the benefits from it?
Yes.
Thank you. I could send you an email if you want.
Yeah. I was just reaching over for a pen there, but yes, there is a trust, and that's an option for us as well. So the next page, on Page 11 of your, your slide deck, is the, sort of the pension picture for the next 10 years. And so what I've done is I've projected out from 2019-20 out to 2027-28. You're able, you'll be able to find the total field in the financial, the long-term forecast starting on 2019-20. But here are the numbers that make up those totals, and as you can see, our pension expense rises up, starting at, we're at about 5.7, actually, we're about 5.5 million this year. And it rises up, if everything goes according to plan, rises up, rises up to about 9.6 million in '27, '28. What I've done in this particular grid here is at the bottom is I isolated the change in the CalPERS liability. The first pension expense on this chart is our normal CalPERS pension liability. The last category of pension is also CalPERS. So one is the normal, and the other is the, sort of the makeup, the UAL. And so it's the UAL that's actually creeping up every year, and the normal's creeping up as well, but it's the UAL that's driving the whole show. And at the very bottom of this grid is I've isolated the change in the normal and the UAL, so you can see the rise in the CalPERS-related pension cost. So as you can see, in 1920, when we build the budget next year, we have to automatically factor in another almost $800,000 in pension costs. Again, this becomes part of the process of balancing this budget. In 2021, we're down a half a million, 2021-22, we're up to 655, and then, you know, it stays at that level, and then '23, '24, out to '27, '28, it actually levels off to a amount And so we're going to have to look for solutions.
A question, Lorenzo.
Yes.
Okay, the pension expense POB, that's the pension obligation bond, correct?
Yes, yes.
What is the reason, okay, I'm assuming we're paying off a little bit of principal each year?
Mm-hmm.
And it's a fixed rate of interest, so why is that going up, one?
The am, sorry.
Oh, and then two, several years back, we borrowed money from the wastewater treatment plant fund to get us over the hump.
Yes.
And then we were going to just pay that back and then do this. I know we're doing that, and we are paying back the sewer treatment plant fund, but why is this going up?
Well, it's going up...
We were told it was going to be going level or down.
Well, it's, it's going up because of the amortization schedule, and so this, all of our bond payment schedules are in our CAFR, and so that's where all these numbers come, that's where these numbers come from. So the, and I don't know, you know, who told you, but we have to, we have to pay these bonds back in accordance with the agreement. And so we've got, you know, and the agreement calls for in '22, '23, for example, that the payment is 865,000. Now, what I've done, and in '23, '24, it's the same payment, so it does level off, and so what I've done for '24, '25 is in our CAFR, they've lumped together those, those years into one figure, and I just took those, I just took that figure and divided it by the number of years. And because I, I have that, but it's easier to get to in the CAFR. So that's that, that's why that 960 stays the same.
Okay.
But those numbers are actually different on the actual amortization schedule.
Okay.
But as far as they're going up, going down, staying steady, I think they're going to stay steady. You know, I think they'll stay below a million, and, but I'd have to, I'd have to find the actual bond issuance document and look at...
The prospectus type of thing.
Yes, yes.
Okay, no, that's okay, because I, you've done a different accounting thing, but the numbers remain what they are.
Yes.
But we are over the hump, and we are paying back the sewer treatment fund.
Right.
As our general, what our promise was to the taxpayers.
Yes.
That's included in the budget.
And so that, and it's great that you brought this up, because if you look at your long-term plan and you look at the expenditures, and at the very bottom of the expenditure, you'll see a transfer out, POB to WWTB, and that's the payment of the loan. And so this year, we've, we've paid 147, last year, we paid 171. Next year, in addition to that increased pension cost, we've got to also find space for that $900,000 payment that we now have to make to the wastewater treatment fund. So those are, those are actually the two big pressures that I'm concerned about, is fitting in the pension and then figuring out how to take care of the wastewater, wastewater Any more questions so far? Okay. So as far as our situation here in Pacifica, as you can see, the product of matching the revenues and expenditures are here in the long-term financial plan. We project, as you see, that our expenditures will continue to outpace our revenues throughout '27, '28. And as I mentioned, the city manager and, and his team will bring forward and recommend a balanced budget on an annual basis. Now, because of the varieties of uncertainties that affect our finances, these projections are updated every year. And what we would like to do is come back to you in the spring and see if we have some better information for you. So we'd like to take the opportunity to update these numbers one more time. It's very similar to what the state does, the governor releases his budget on January 10th, they then will come back with a May revise, and right before the budget is considered. And so it'll be somewhat similar to that.
Good.
That's what happens when you hire a former state employee, so. And if there are any questions, our, our recommendation is that you accept the report, and we ask that you accept it. And I'm here for any questions, and we will... And we will move on to the next item. We will continue this slide presentation with the next item.
I just kind of, for the public's review, is if my math is correct, right now, 2018, '19, our pension obligations are about 16% of our budget. And if you look at the projections in 2027, '28, they are about 23% of our budget.
Right.
Is what they will increase to. And according to your projections for revenue, our revenue is only going to increase, increase approximately 10%. And the pension obligation, pension expense is actually going to almost double, 4 million more at the end of the 10-year projection. So this is, and this is something that every city and district in the state of California is facing. And there was one, I saw a chart a while back. There was one city in Pacific, in San Mateo County, that they were almost gonna be 71% of, 71 cents of every payroll dollar was gonna have to go to pension obligations. And we are in the mid-40s, which is pretty average for everybody else. But since our budget is what, roughly 85% of it is personnel costs?
About 70, 80, yeah.
70 to 80, yeah, okay. And personnel is what provides services.
Right.
So we're gonna be making some hard choices between services and jobs and meeting these increased liabilities we have from the state because of the pensions. And just for everybody's reference, CalPERS had a negative return on their investments of 3.6% last year, which dug us deeper in the hole.
Is there any discussion at a state level that we should know about?
I do happen to know, I was at the League Board of Directors meeting this past week, and this is one of the high priorities for the board. And the governor came to speak to us, and he did tell us that this issue, which actually the projections are that within the next 10 years, all cities in California will be facing pension costs to be 25% of their general fund revenues. And the governor understands that, and he is committed to working with the cities to try and address this. He did say, however, that this is a very difficult issue, and it's tough to solve. And, but he is committed to trying, and it's certainly one of the highest priorities for the board.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And if you, I just wanted to say a couple more things. We, in an effort to be transparent, we released a new webpage last week. And it's entitled Pension Information. And so all the presentations that I've brought to you, CAFR reports, and so it's, this page is loaded with past presentations and reports that we provided related to pension. It also provides some of the things, some documents that the grand jury asked us to do. And so it's all out there on the city's webpage. It's under the Admin Services tab. And if anybody has any problems reaching it, let me know. I think it's a, I think it's a good portal to educate the citizens here in Pacifica about sort of the looming pension issue.
Okay, would someone like to move, make a move to accept?
Move, we accept the long-term financial plan as presented.
One second. Did you do public comment?
Oh, public comment?
Oops.
Oop. There is no public comment, so I will ask if anybody would like to speak on this, sorry, before we vote. No yellow cards. Okay, now we can vote. Thank you.
No public comment.
And that passes five to nothing. So our next item, Lorenzo, item number seven.
The next item is the mid-year update. And so what we're requesting here is that we're recommending that council move to adopt the resolution to increase the adopted budgeted appropriation by 651,000, which will increase the general fund appropriation to 35,219,000 for fiscal year 1819. This will reflect $451,000 in additional revenue and sort of department, based on revenue and departmental budget information. And it will also appropriate $200,000 from the compensated absences reserve to address 2019, 2018, '19 separation costs for employees. And three, increase revenue and expenditure authority in Fund 18, and this is a technical adjustment we'll talk about later, to transfer 13.5 million in bond proceeds to Fund 34 for the construction of the EQ Basin. And so back in June 25th, 2018, we adopted our general fund operating budget at 34,568,000. And mid-year, we come back to you with a better estimate as far as our revenues, and it also gives us an opportunity to put forth any changes in our expenditure plan based on the needs of the department. So our revised estimates for the general fund revenues are $637,000 higher for this year than projections at the original adoption of the 1819 budget. We're also projecting an increase in budgeted expenditures of 451,000. And so the additional revenues actually exceed the need for additional expenditures, resulting in a surplus of about $186,000. Now, we estimate that most of this surplus can be attributed to increases in the childcare program, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a bit. And what, what parks would like to do is they've gotten an increase in revenues, and what they'd like to do is spend about 151,000 of those dollars on equipment for the childcare program. And we'll come back-
Is that, that's just the childcare program, not the parks or the rec? Because I know they're doing an assessment. It's not the parks?
I believe it's just childcare. So, but we'll talk more on that. Just a second. Let me tell you a little bit about the changes to the general fund budgeted revenues. Based on what we're seeing for property taxes, we've increased our estimate for property taxes by about $196,000. And this is based on receipts that we've seen from July up through February. Our departmental program, dollars have increased, and we're gonna, we recommend an increase in that particular revenue stream of about 298,000. The main drivers of that increase are increased vehicle license fees, which is about 89,000, and as I mentioned earlier, about $342,000 in additional dollars coming in through the childcare program. So that's the good news. And over on the expenditure side, we're asking for increased authority in two departments. And the first department is the city attorney. We're asking to move the expenditure authority and from 500,000 up to 800,000 to deal with a number of extraordinary and unexpected demands for legal services since July. In addition, the Parks and Recreation Department would like to use 151,000 of this additional revenue to, to, to address identified childcare facility and equipment needs. And so that's sort of the, that's the revenue side and the expenditure side. And I'm gonna stop right there and see if you have any questions before we move on to compensated absences.
So-
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, no, you go first.
Just out of curiosity, is the 180,000 for PBNR, is that like expendable stuff? Or is it almost like capital equipment?
Well, we'll have to, you know, I don't really know, but I think we'll have to see how it reconciles at the end of the year to see how much of that actually ends up flowing to the childcare reserve. And I think that Director Perez usually has a plan and has a policy for how he spends those dollars. And I think capital's probably part of it, and, but he would have the details.
Well, I'm just curious, it's not that big a deal, I trust him. You know, his ability, I just was curious.
Oh, yeah. He's got a plan.
I'm sure he does.
Yes.
But in this, in this update, you're not asking for, you're not, you're just asking for approval of this, not approval of the additional funds, right?
We are asking to increase the general fund budget from-
In this request this evening?
Yes.
So then I do have that question. I guess if Director Perez can answer that, is, is any of that gonna, it's a selfish reason, because I was on PBNR, and I know that they were doing an assessment of all of our parks and rec. I frequent the parks all the time with my children now, so I'm wondering if any of those funds are gonna be used, because I know you did an assessment, or you're in the process of an assessment, on any of the equipment in the, in the parks right now.
Good evening, Michael Perez, your Parks, Beaches and Recreation Director. To answer your question, so the first increase is in staffing levels to make sure we have enough staff to cover the children that we're serving. So if I back up for a minute, the reason why we're seeing a lot of revenue is because we have an unprecedented amount of kids in our program right now. We started the school year with about 70 kids on the waiting list. We have waiting lists at almost all of our centers right now, and we will have waiting lists, we're anticipating, through the summer. So a lot of folks that we're serving, so we need to staff up for that. So we're spending, some of the revenue is, we're also asking for expenditure authority to make those staffing needs. But we also thought that with the additional revenue would be a good time to address the childcare-specific facilities that the city owns. So we own Fairmont West, Fairmont Rec. We have preschools at both those places, and those buildings were built in the 60s. And we'd like to make some improvements there. We'd also, are gonna take a look at the playground at Fairmont West as well. So some of these things are capital improvements, and some are more capital outlay, like, you know, painting and rugs and a couple fixtures and things like that for the restrooms. So we don't have it all down there. We've got some decent estimates right now, but no bids or anything like that.
Okay, and are there funds set aside to do any repairs on the existing play structures at our parks?
So we're not addressing any of that right now at the mid-year, and that would be something that we would be addressing for sure as part of the capital program for next year. So in about a month and a half when we come back, we'll be coming to you with a plan for how to spend some dollars to upgrade those types of things that you're talking about.
So the assessment's complete then?
No.
It'll be done, okay.
No, assessment will, the audit, it's a playground audit will be done this year. But I think even without the audit, we have a fairly decent idea of what we're gonna do. This will help us kind of prioritize all of those things, put them in place so we can address, you know, the ones that we'll need, kind of roll it out, and maybe a couple-year plan or something like that.
Thanks.
I have a question for you, Director Perez, too. So would the funds actually increase the capacity to like address the waiting lists?
We can only serve as many kids as we're licensed for.
I see.
So when I say we're, we have a waiting list, that's a waiting list up to our licensed capacity.
I see.
So unless, I know the principal at Valamar said, I'd get you another portable if I could. But right now, and also it's, we're also experiencing a tough time staffing as well. So that's another issue for us. When you have that many kids, we need to staff up for licensing requirements.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. With regard to the legal fee increases, can you talk a little bit more about those extraordinary and unexpected demands and what we think the coming year is gonna look like in that regard?
So the primary increase in legal expenditures relates to the marijuana, getting the program instituted?
Right.
And also with dealing with illegal operations? That's the majority. There were also increased costs that were associated with the voter rights challenge that was not expected. And then we had an inordinate amount of costs associated with Public Records Act requests, responses. And that really makes up the majority of the costs. I would say with the Public Records Act requests, that could be recurring in the next fiscal year. With regard to the voters' rights challenge, I don't see that continuing into the next year. With regard to the marijuana startup costs, that will not be quite as large. But keep in mind that with all of those costs, which is the biggest cost in this increase, we do expect to get reimbursed for that. Once the businesses are in operation, we will be instituting a fee to recover our full cost for the regulatory program.
And with regard to public records requests, can you refresh my memory on what portion of that is, can be charged for public records? Is it copying any of that? Can we defray any of those costs in terms of any kind of fee structure?
We have a per-page copying cost that does not cover the costs to search for the records, review the records, redact privileged and non-responsive records, which is what the city attorney's time is mostly includes.
And legally, we can't do any kind of cost recovery for that?
No, we can only charge for the actual cost per page.
Okay, thank you.
So the other thing I'd like to add is that part of the city attorney's costs is for labor negotiations as well. So I just wanted to remind you. Any more questions on this particular part of the presentation? Okay, so we're looking for, at least for right now, as far as we've come, we're looking for $300,000 in additional expenditure authority for the city attorney's budget and another 151,000 in expenditure authority for the Parks, Parks and Rec, Parks, Beaches and Recreation. In addition to those items, we have the compensated, compensated absences fund. And so per Admin Policy 76A, the 1819 adopted budget provided an initial deposit of 200,000 to fund the disbursement and the expenditures related to separated or retired employees. The total disbursements for retired and separated employees this year totals $255,000, which exceeds the balance by 55,000. And so therefore, the city manager requests the appropriation from this reserve, actually appropriates, requests appropriation of the entire reserve as it stands right now. And we would move those dollars into the general fund and reimburse those departments that have had to foot the cost for those separation expenditures. And so we would be increasing the general fund budget by another $200,000.
And this is going to, I just wanted to-
Go ahead.
That is going to be a line item every year, if I remember correctly now, correct?
Yeah, we'll be, when we come back and do the 1920 budget, we will be requesting to replenish that, that compensated absence reserve.
And just like for the general public, the reason, right now, we've been doing a pay-as-you-go when somebody retires and they have accumulated sick leave verification, whatever the contract allows, it's been a one-time expense paid off. Now, by amortizing this every year, we're building up a fund that we will match that liability with the money, and we won't get hit with, let's say, because like every municipality and a lot of companies, we're, our employees are reaching their golden years and will want to retire. So that's why we're doing that, and I want to commend Lorenzo for coming up with that. I think last year, it was-
I think the city manager had something to do with it as well.
Well, I don't want his head to get too big, you know? But I think it's a really good budget item for the city to be doing that instead of- But I think it's a really good budget item for the city to be doing that instead of pay as you go.
Right. The other advantage to this is that this $255,000 is currently being absorbed by the departments. And so what we're hoping and what we're looking to do here is spread at least those departments that are in the general fund, give them some relief. And so this $200,000 is dedicated solely to the general fund departments, and departments outside of the general fund, kind of like wastewater, will have to absorb their additional costs on their own, and they're perfectly capable of absorbing those costs. But what this does is allow us to reimburse the departments for these expenditures, because these expenditures are taking dollars away from services. And so we want to replenish the department so they can refocus those dollars back into services. And so that's what brings our total request to $651,000. Again, $300,000 for the city attorney, $151,000 for Parks and Rec... Parks, Beaches and Recreation, sorry, Director Perez, and another $200,000 for the movement of the compensated absence reserve into the general fund. And so we're requesting an increase of $651,000 in general fund expenditure authority. So let me move on. If there are no questions on that, I'll move on to the technical adjustment. So in the wastewater utility, there are two funds. There's the operating fund, Fund 18, and the capital fund, Fund 34. We, a couple of years back, went out and got a revenue bond to construct the equalization basin. The bond and bond proceeds sit in Fund 18, the operating fund. The expenditures for construction sit in Fund 34, because 34 is the capital fund. And so when I built the budget for 1819, what I didn't do was put forth a mechanism to transfer, to allow Fund 18 to transfer dollars to Fund 34, to pay for the expenditures that are going on in Fund 34, using the bond money that sits in Fund 18. And if this is sounding geeky, I apologize. But that's why I consider this a technical adjustment. We're not asking for... There's no more money. It's just a way to transfer dollars from one fund to another so we can continue construction. And so when our auditors show up here in a few months, they'll know that we noticed that, and we fixed it.
So this sounds to me like we're... Maybe I'm wrong. Going to be going over budget on the waste? Or is this just the sewer piece that has no relation to the EQ basin?
It has... It's all about the EQ basin.
We are going to be going over budget?
No. No, 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 no. This is about covering the cost of the EQ basin. And because the proceeds... The bond proceeds, the money, sits over here.
Right.
The construction activity sits over here.
So we just borrow it in the meantime?
No, no. We've already borrowed it. We've already borrowed it. But what we have to do is pay for the construction as it's going on. And so the way we pay for the construction is that we transfer the dollars out of where the money is to where the construction's actually being done. And so that's what I'm asking for here.
Like moving it from savings to checking?
I was just going to offer the analogy of transferring money from savings to a checking account.
There you go. Thank you.
In a personal...
That makes a lot more sense.
Thank you.
What a geek.
I'll keep that in mind. I'm sorry.
I just...
Forgive me for...
So before we go on, we do have a member of the public who'd like to speak on this expense item on number seven. Aaron Macias, would you like to come forward?
I live here in Pacifica, and I was very involved in kind of the opposition to the EQ basin initially. I wanted to just briefly talk a little bit about... I love... First of all, I love the analogy from savings to checking, because that makes it a lot easier for laypeople to understand. I wanted to kind of know where we are as far as expenses with the EQ basin. Are we going to stay within the budget, or are we going to have to dip into the general fund to be able to complete that project? The other thing I would really like to comment on is that since this EQ basin project has started, there have been no chorus frogs at all at that site.
No what?
No chorus frogs. They are completely absent this year. In the 22 years I've lived here, I've walked down my street and I've listened to those chorus frogs sing to me every year when it rains. They are no longer there.
Don't want to...
No frogs.
Oh.
Thank you.
A chorus of frogs. Oh.
Oh, right.
A chorus of frogs. Okay.
I can't speak to the status of the EQ basin. That is for the public works and the city manager to report out on. Yeah, I really can't speak to it. The fund itself is in good shape, so if there is any overruns, it would come out of wastewater, would not touch the general fund. But I don't know if we're there, and I think that's a conversation for, I think, another council meeting.
Just a brief comment. The EQ basin project is under budget, but we're continually evaluating that as the progress proceeds, you know, with the challenges that we have with the pipeline and the contractor, as we've spoken of previously. But we're actually, right now, reassessing all of the budget numbers, and we won't be expending any general fund dollars on the EQ basin.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, but just a comment. I actually have chorus frogs in my backyard now, and I never did before, so maybe they just found a new home.
Nice.
See, I have another transfer analogy now. So, all right. Yeah.
Geekiness paid off.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget request increase in item... How do I do this? Item?
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution for the budget increase. Is it $650,000? Where's the amount?
You can just say as attached to the staff report.
As attached to the staff report.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Michael will.
No more questions, right? Okay, everyone vote.
Did you have a public comment?
I already had a public comment. And that passes five to nothing. We are on our last item now. The Beach Boulevard Hotel Development Update.
Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager. I'm presenting the staff report for item number eight, the 2212 Beach Boulevard update. In October 2015, City Council approved the first RFQ/RFP selection process to seek qualified development teams for the 2212 Beach Boulevard site. For the reasons outlined in detail in the report, city and a selected development team mutually agreed to terminate negotiations. In February 2018, City Council authorized staff to issue a new RFQ to solicit development proposals for the site. Given the limited response to the second RFQ, the city withdrew the RFQ solicitation and rejected the sole response received. It was appropriated in the city's best interest to withdraw the solicitation and instead focus on the necessary steps to secure some of the land use entitlements needed to develop this site as directed by the city council. This latest RFQ process revealed that while there remained significant interest in this location, there are a number of obstacles to development that the city can address, which are expected to not only decrease development uncertainty, but enhance the value of the site and increase competition for the opportunity to develop the site. Therefore, the city manager recommends the following process currently underway: to update the general plan and the local coastal land use plan, and complete the Sharp Park specific plan, which will help prepare the 2212 Beach Boulevard site for a successful RFQ process. These planned updates, along with the research into improvements at the city's city pump station, and plans for the reconstruction of the Sharp Park library are all pieces of the comprehensive development plan for Sharp Park that will bring more certainty to the hotel's site value and development potential, and will help solicit more competitive RFQs when the planning process updates are completed. Staff is available for any questions, and that's the staff report.
Biggest question I have is that the entitlement process is going to take 18 to 24 months. This hole has been sitting here for...
18 years.
I was going to say 20 years, but I'd be exaggerating. Is there any way that we can do some of these in a faster manner besides the two years that this is probably going to take to get this site entitled?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that initially, and then if Planning Director Waremeister would like to add information, feel free to do so. The current plan would have the local coastal program, the specific plan and the general plan completed, I believe, in the... By June of next year and submitted to the Coastal Commission. And the first step of that, actually, the local coastal plan submittal would be in... By December of this year, so sooner than that. And once it's submitted to the Coastal Commission, that's... There's a different timeline that ticks there that we don't have control over. They have three months to process it, or they can give themselves an extension for up to a year. So that's applicable to any project that the Coastal Commission reviews, any local coastal plan amendment that they review. In looking at ways to accelerate the entitlements for this site specifically, there's multiple variables to compare the benefits of doing that, the cost, the staff resources, and the product that would come out of that compared to, as the council knows, we've begun the process and authorized a contract for the LCP general plan and Sharp Park specific plan work. The entitlements to the Beach Hotel site are part of this larger process. If we endeavored to carve out just the hotel site and pursue the entitlements individually for that, it would be kind of a duplicated effort to the general plan, LCP, and specific plan process. It would speed up the process by, give or take, six months, but it would cost an additional up to $100,000. And there are some other outcomes of the specific plan and LCP and general plan process that wouldn't benefit the individual Beach Boulevard site entitlement process going forward. In other words, for example, with the LCP, once that's complete, our sea level rise adaptation policies will be finalized. And that is a piece of certainty that will add benefit to developer interests in the site. So if we carve out the Beach Boulevard site separate from that, they don't have the benefit of knowing what our final sea level rise adaptation policies are, as one example. So I think while there is a path forward to, you know, carve out and independently pursue entitlements for the Beach Boulevard site, the ramifications to particularly planning resources, because that takes staff time to do that, would delay other projects, including the housing discussions in the community, the Home for All and other affordable housing conversations, as well as the LCP general plan and specific plan. Just we wouldn't have the staff time and planning to be able to do the duplicative Beach Boulevard site entitlement process alone. I think I'll stop there, and if Director Waremeister has anything to add, please do. But while it's possible, in summary, the hotel team together thinks that a very appropriate process forward is what we're recommending in the current path we're on.
And can I finish that side thought, too? Do you think that some of our qualifications we had for this site and asking for the bids was too extreme for most people? Do you want me to be specific? Ocean Discovery Center or any of our labor issues that we put into the RFP/RFQ process?
Well, I think what we learned from our due diligence and following up with potential proposers to the RFQ is that, number one, the entitlement process is the biggest obstacle and the uncertainty with the Coastal Commission. So therefore, the city doing that first before we market it is a good thing. All of the other issues sort of add up to additional burdens on the site that make it complicated. Things like, well, what is the final sea level rise policy is going to be? You know, what about the plant and odors from the plant? What can be done about those? What about the library? Is the library going to happen there? And, you know, what about complications related to an Ocean Discovery Center or other fiscal matters related to, you know, the check card processor unit? Those all... Individually, none of those is probably the main obstacle. Altogether, it adds up to this very complicated puzzle that if we can resolve some major portions of that puzzle and piece those pieces together before going back out to bid, it'll just increase the chance that we'll have a successful RFQ and RFP process and garner a higher price in the negotiation for the property.
Okay. Mike, and then Sue.
I would personally like to see us move this up to an earlier completion date. And I realize we have no control of the Coastal Commission, but I know... But we do have control over our staff and the plan and the entitlement process up to the application of the Coastal Commission. And one of the reasons is if this is tied up with the Sharp Park specific plan, which I fully support, that will be... That's the estimated date of completion for that is June 2020, which means, okay, we then turn that into the Coastal Commission for, let's say, July or August of 2020. You said that they can delay that up to a year, so we're talking 2021, August 2021. Then we get the entitlements from the Coastal Commission. We put together an RFPQ, which seems to have been taking several months. We're talking 2022, before we even go out for an RFP. Now, we're all looking at these 10-year financial projections, and to see that this city's going to need that revenue, where we need to try to get this... The transit occupancy tax onboard as soon as we can, in addition to whatever we can sell the cost of that property for, or this property for. And the thing is, is the reason I asked Lorenzo about that 512 trust is a method for cities to try to mitigate the higher cost of the pension obligations we have to pay, so that we would... Let's say we get a check for, just grabbing a figure, not quoting anything, $5 million for this piece of property. Okay, we put that in the bank. We can have a fixed dollar figure for the pension obligations of, let's say, $500,000 in the budget, and as it goes up to $900,000, we can mitigate that extra cost and protect city services, police, fire, public work, seawalls by withdrawing out that $500,000. So we're still meeting the pension obligations as well, but we're still maintaining the services we want and our citizens want in the city. So I think we need to take and move forward and get this online as soon as we possibly can. can to the RFP. I mean, I would like to see the application to the Coastal Commission done, no, you know, July or August of this year, if they can, you know, do whatever ceremonies they do down there, you know, for a year, we're talking there. But I think this thing is, in addition to the estimates we had for transit occupancy tax for this budget, for this estimate was nine hundred thousand dollars a year based on one hundred and twenty rooms. Okay, we've eliminated the library, we might be able to go a little higher on that. But I think we need to move and get this done, because once, once you get the entitlements here, you get the Coastal Commission, you still have to do the RFQ. It's still probably two years of construction work, so you're talking five to six years before we get other, we get our first check. Michelle, what is typical for when, when we sell this property? We, we, we get a check for the sales price, then they bill, correct?
Well, it, it depends on what the, the agreement is. But, you know, to, to your point, I, I would just like to point out that, that certainly, you know, expediting the process is going to help, but just simply doing this city entitlement process before is going to speed up the process even once we issue the RFP. What I have seen happen when cities have done what staff is recommending in this situation, once that entitlement is in place, those entitlements are in place through city planning, then you put out the RFP, and then that process from RFP to entitled project, that happens within months. That, that does not take years to do. So I, I just want to make sure that you're aware that, that the long period that you're looking at for this project really is the entitlement. And, you know, to expedite that, you know, if, if staff resources and, and the council wants to put forward that kind of budget expense for that expedited process, that, that would certainly help. But understand that you're not looking at the same length of time for entitlement, which usually means when you get the check and, and sale, as, as you would if the city doesn't do this process, so.
You see, the way Kevin described the process is, he described it all as consecutively, not concurrently. I, I would like to see us move ahead with the entitlement process on the hotel, while at the same time, we're doing the Sharp Park specific plan. And then when we actually are getting, while the entitlement process for the hotel is at the Coastal Commission, the Sharp Park specific plan would continue concurrently. Then when we do our RFQ, we can actually, and I know the LCP will have to go to the Coastal Commission, but we then are taking and can advertise that RFQ as the city has submitted the LCP to the coastal plan, to the Coastal Commission, which counts for seawall, sea level rising, and the library, you know, the earliest the ballot for the library bond can go to the ballot is June 2020, right? Because they have to be done either presidential or governor primary, or is that true? Bond measures and fiscal taxes can only go governor primary?
You know, the, the, the earliest geo-bond measure could go is, is November of this year.
November of this year? I thought there was something, that they had to be done...
For taxes.
For taxes, okay. But a bond isn't considered a tax? Oh, okay. So, all right, so you, so, but then at that point, we will have decided if there's gonna be a library based on the results of the election, and if you run the entitlement process for the hotel along with the specific plan, when we put out the RFQ, everything can be mentioned in that RFQ and that the city has applied, applied for the entitlements and the approval of the LCP. While if you go with the way as proposed by staff, you are taking and lengthening that entitlement process or delaying the entitlement process. Am I making sense?
Again, going back, the, the difference between pursuing the path that, that I'm recommending and carving out the Beach Boulevard site and pursuing entitlements individually for that is about a six-month difference in the end product entitlements. So it achieves six months at the expense of, you know, up to a hundred thousand dollars of consultant expense, because you have separate environmental review, et cetera. And even, but more concerning to, to me is at the expense of our limited planning resource, planning staff resources, and the impact that would have on the projects that they're currently pursuing. And, and if, you know, I, I think if, if the council were serious about evaluating this difference, I, I would request to come back to the council with much more specific information about what that staff impact would mean to current council priorities. How would it delay the Sharp Park specific plan, general plan, and LCP update process, as well as affordable housing and RV homeless conversations that planning is, is integral in? So we don't have all of that detail tonight, but again, that's the trade-off.
Sue, and then Mary.
I had a question about the Sharp Park specific plan in terms of that issue of concurrency. It sounded to me like all three plans would be happening somewhat simultaneously, but I honestly don't know what the work plan is. So I'm wondering if you can address that, or if that's a more detailed question that needs to be addressed at another time. That's, because it seems to me that the Sharp Park specific plan is going to be looking at that site as containing a hotel.
Correct.
Is it not?
No, that, that's correct, right. That's, that's part of the current proposal. I'll, I'll ask Director Waremeister if she wants to elaborate on that, that schedule.
Your, your assumption is, or your understanding is correct, that they are gonna be progressing simultaneously. And when I say they, I mean the general plan, LCP update, and the specific plan. And the reason why the LCP update can go to be submitted to the Coastal Commission a little earlier is because of the difference in sequel requirements and local action for that particular document. And it would be consistent with our grant requirements to submit by the end of this year.
When you say lo, can I ask her a question? When you say local action, are you referring to planning?
No. Local action for legislative entitlements would be with the city council.
Okay, I have one other question, and I need to, it also may be premature, because I don't really know where we are with planning commission decisions and how they affect other processes like this. But I'm wondering, with recent decisions about constraints on building on Long Beach Boulevard that have been conditions of approval, are those going to affect this project in terms of how we put forward, forward our RFQ? I'm talking specifically about not having bedrooms on the first floor of a building that is close to the seawall.
I think that if we were, you know, that particular project, we were thinking about coastal flooding and wave overtopping, and so therefore, there was some discussion about habitable space on the, or overnight habitable space on the ground floor. I would anticipate there would be similar discussions about the hotel, depending on exactly where it's sited on the look, on this site.
Okay, thank you. Mary.
So are there opportunities to lease the property rather than sell it? I was just curious. That would bring in consistent revenue, or has that happened before, or?
You go.
And are, are you talking about specifically for a hotel, for hotel developers? I, I remember when I arrived here last year, I'd asked that, that very question, but hotels often want to own the site that, that they are building on, and, but I'll, you know...
No, that, that's true. I mean, technically, yes, there are. Technically, there are a lot of cities that are into ground leases and, and then allow construction and buildings and, but as the city manager just relayed, with hotels, they generally, and I've faced this in other communities as well, they generally do not want ground leases, they want to own the property.
Thank you.
Director, do you have any questions?
Okay. Public comment. We have three cards. The first card is Nancy Stotts, followed by Chris Redfield and Erin Macias.
I'd like to encourage the council to move as expeditiously as possible to increase our ability to increase our revenues, both through business plans and through the building of hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, followed by Erin.
Good evening again, staff, council. Kind of blew my notes out of the water after that was a very interesting discussion. A lot of interesting things came out there. I do believe we need to move forward this, this plan to expedite. That would be wonderful. I believe the expense was a hundred thousand dollars additional to what we already have for an LCP, general plan update, Sharp Park plan update. That's an expenditure that is steep for us, very steep for us. We still need the general plan, we still need the LCP. Those need to go forward. We do need to expedite this, but we need to get this done. I believe it would be better to not spend the money, if we can, and get the LCP done. Again, we all know the landmines that that entails. I think we've already been there, the Sharp Park plan, the money, if we don't have that plan, that, this, this property is kind of like the quarry. It has no value, almost, without, we've known that from, obviously, we discovered recently the failure to have any presentations for an RFQ. They're not gonna commit unless they know the future. That's a pretty logical assumption on anybody that's talking about spending that kind of money that they're talking about to do it here. Our financial obligations, as was, was pointed out tonight, they're tough, but they're gonna, they're gonna spiral out of control if we don't have a sustainable future. And if we don't have money coming in from something, a project of this magnitude, which is big, it's very big for us. But that LCP and that general plan and that Sharp Park specific plan must be done as soon as possible. Without it, we're spinning our wheels. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Erin.
Hi, I'm Erin Macias. I'd kind of like to echo what he said, actually. Considering the assumptions that were made by Mr. Hines, beautiful job on the budget, by the way, that our expenditures, expenditures are outpacing our revenue, we need to take a serious look at how we can increase that revenue. Hotels are bringing in five percent per the budget. We need to move this project forward and increase that number. The community supports this vision, but I do have to ask each of you, and no disrespect, but when was the last time you took a vacation to visit a public library? Let's not put the cart before the horse right now. That's a to-do item that has a lot of community support, but that's when we have the revenue. Personally, I think we risk losing investors if we have another failed library bond. Investing and enhancing the aesthetic draw to complement our amazing coastline, inviting and supporting new restaurants, shops, and particularly anchoring boutiques is what is gonna make this come together. We can look to other communities who have done this, adapting the LCP to make this area attractive to investors and to us as residents, should have the full support of council. We need council to lobby the Coastal Commission aggressively to support this project, and we need to get things moving. I think if you, if you drive along, you know, other coast side communities, you can see that they're investing in incremental, sustainable development. This project is definitely an investment in our city, and I think we owe it to our community to move forward expeditiously so we can return the services to those families and small businesses who have invested here and have made Pacifica their home. Thank you.
Hi. Gern, we'll fill out a card later.
Fun right here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Tiger Jess Trulz, big stick of Pacifica. And I just want to kind of regurgitate what I think my mind just heard, because I think I heard it slightly different than at least one of the speakers. In the interest of doing this as quickly as possible, it didn't sound like the issue is a hundred thousand dollars. It sounded like the issue is if we put the focus on the entitlements, then it's very possible that the local coastal plan and the Sharp Park specific plan and the general plan might take much longer. So on the one hand, we're talking about six months that the entitlement itself might be expedited. But it sounded like what the people looking at these property to buy might be looking at is taken as a whole. If we don't have a seawall plan, whether or not their hotel is as viable. They might be more interested in this spot as viable if we have a Sharp Park specific plan in which they can see exactly how they want to integrate this hotel into a business model in congruence with the city's plan. I've never quite understood why does the city would take it upon themselves to put a thing about the Ocean Discovery in? I think it's a lovely idea. It sounds like it's something the Ocean Discovery needs to take up with the developer, so I don't quite understand why the city would have that at all in the RFP, RFQ. But so far, what it sounds like to me is that in the interest of time, if all of these pieces are in place, or if the majority of these pieces are in place, that's what will get this sold as quickly as possible and at the highest rate simultaneously. And that's not a matter of money so much, or even getting the one piece in place as if we get the bulk of these pieces put together in the best, quickest way. So like, if there's a bunch of pieces over here that will get done quicker, than if we just focus on this one piece and get that done quickly, then we have a thing that, as a whole, even though there's a little give and take, goes quicker in balance, I think is what I heard? I'm just voicing what I thought I heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to the council. Counsel.
So I agree with, with the recommended action, that we need to make this place a little bit more appealing for potential investors, that we, by, it becomes more appealing by us doing basically the EIR, right? Letting them know what they can and cannot do here before they have to pay. So we're essentially paying for a portion of what they would have to do before they even got here, right? Okay. So that, to me, is a potential developer would, would, sounds more appealing to me anyway, because some of my costs is already offset. And, and I'm not, I don't think it's ever our intention to slow down this process. I'm just kind of commenting on some of the things I've heard. You know, the Pacific Ocean Discovery Center came up. It's not a thing. It is a line item in the RFP that says, if you want to discuss a Pacific Ocean Discovery Center with the people here in Pacifica, you can very well do so. That's all it says. The, I'd be more, and I'm concerned about our future, I'm absolutely concerned about our future, Mike. I'd be more apt to use, like, set aside ERAF funds to help cover our pension costs than I would be to focus all of our energy this year on getting, you know, a new RFP out that was absolutely failed last year. So I, I just think that we'd be spinning our wheels again, and we had, March 9th, we, we're gonna have a tall order, and that's to come up with our new goals. And if this is one of our top goals, there, I think we have our priorities mixed up considering all the, the other things that have already come up in the first two months of, of the new year, even though it's, it's technically not our new operating year, if you will. So I'd be, I'd be willing to, to, to go with the, the city's recommended action tonight.
Anyone else?
I have concerns about the length of time that the coastal, the local coastal plan and the general plan update may take in light of our recent sea level rise adaptation process that we went through with... that we went through with the amount of extended time and money that went into that process. And I guess what I'm not clear on is exactly how, I get, I understand, I think, how the specific plan for Sharp Park relates to the hotel. I understand in general how a general plan and local coastal plan relate, however, comma, we've been living with one from 1980 all this time. So while it's a goal, we all voted for it, we want to see it happen, it's necessary. I don't know if I accept that the hotel project hinges on it, in the same way that Erin was talking about, when was the last time you went to, on vacation to visit a library? Well, I've actually done that, but it wasn't the purpose of the trip. But I wonder if that, you know, when the proposal was to have the library on that site, I think that was a big piece. But it's across the street, there's a library across the street now. So I don't know how much that's going to play into developers. I didn't talk to them. I didn't talk to potential developers or people who didn't respond to the RFQ, so I can't really comment on that. But I do know there's already a library there, so that's something that's going to be stated in terms of what the neighborhood is and all of that. So those are my biggest concerns. I'm just wondering back to the issue of concurrence and being able to work on the specific plan with every goal and intention of having LCP and general plan align, but is there a way, if they're not going to align, that we can move forward with specific plan and hotel independent of that? That's, and so to your question about should you bring back other information for us, I think that's what I'm asking. I don't know if you can answer that right now, or if Tina has, if Director Wermeyerster has any input into that, or thoughts on that issue of timing and concurrence and overlap of those processes.
I'll start, and then Tina can jump in. One of the deadlines we're working under is for our LCP submittal by December, so one of the concerns about delaying that is that Coastal Commission-driven deadline of this year, the grant-based deadline. And as to the specific plan process, I think one thing that could be informative is planning is currently working with Diet and Batia, the consultant hired to do those three projects in mapping out the schedule and the public engagement process and all the steps in that, and how they are sequenced between the specific plan, the LCP, and the general plan.
So is your question about, I just want to make sure I understand your question, about concurrence between the three documents that were already contracted to do, or adding the concurrence of focusing on this site as well?
Well, really both, but I'm breaking those three documents, I'm kind of asking specifically about the specific plan.
Okay.
As a track, if you will, with those three documents, as a track that I see pertaining directly to the hotel. And is there a way to proceed along that line and continue forward with that even if we're taking longer with the LCP and general plan portion?
Well, typically, a specific plan is done after, it is consistent with a general plan, and so it's okay to do them concurrently on, you know, following the same track, but you generally would have your general plan adopted first, and then your specific plan would be kind of tearing off of that.
And I'm correct that we're presently operating under our 1983 general plan?
1980 general plan.
Eighty.
Mike?
I guess maybe I do want to remind folks about some of the history of the site, so the, the, there was a general plan amendment, zoning amendment, and specific plan for just this site that was approved by the city. And it was approved, I think, in, at the end of 2013. So, but the difference is, is that included a boutique hotel, housing, and a library site. That was submitted to the Coastal Commission. They provided, staff provided comments, not the commission itself. And then that was put, any response to that was put on hold until we had a developer onboard, because some of their comments were very, very specific, and could, if we agree, if the city agreed to something, could impact how a developer could see the potential, the development potential in the site. So that was put on hold. So I do want you guys to understand and remember the history here, that there is a pending specific plan on this site that the council approved, but we haven't completed the Coastal Commission process.
Okay, that brings me to a new question, then, in regard to that plan. Inasmuch as evaluation has gone on since 2013, I think, to some degree, in response to Coastal Commission feedback with regard to the housing piece, and we certainly know a subsequent council decision has been made to move the library from that site. So now we have basically the hotel, right? Is it, what is the process for taking the approved formerly in 2013 specific plan for that site and amending it?
So that is essentially what we were going to do with Friend. If we were able to bring that negotiation to fruition, we were going to work with him to amend this plan for this site. And so then we would be switching it to only a hotel site with also, you know, the accessory uses, restaurants, maybe some retail, et cetera.
Right.
And then amending that, doing whatever environmental would be needed to adjust for the change in uses, and then submitting that to the Coastal Commission.
And we stopped doing that because?
Well, because the negotiations concluded with Friend.
And is it possible for us to discuss that inasmuch as it was a negotiations issue? Can we talk generally about what the breakdown was in light of Sue Vatterlas' question earlier about what were the problems with RFQ last time around? Can we discuss why that broke down for a second?
No, those were discussed in closed session, so we cannot discuss those.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm done.
Mike?
Okay, just to kind of answer some of the questions, the, Deirdre made the comment, we can just use ERAF money. That's, you know, well and good, but there is no dependence that we would get that. The ERAF stands for Educational Revenue Argumentation, and if the state cuts the budget for the schools, that amount will get smaller every year.
I understand that.
You know, but it is not, it's not money we can guarantee. On the other side also is, we now have a hot hotel market, and interest rates are going up, and every prediction is that there's probably going to be recession in the next couple of years, that we need to take and kind of try to start, strike when the iron is hot. And I think, just given what our projected financial needs are, you know, I think we all want to, you know, we all support, like, human services, which is something that we would be able to consider if we have more revenue, and we could argument the pension obligations with whatever funds we get from the sale of this. I just think that it would behoove us to move this forward at a faster track than with the specific plan. I don't disagree with the idea of the specific plan at all. I think, but, I think when you send out your RFQ with the entitlements from the Coastal Commission for the hotel, you can also say, the city has submitted local coastal plan to the Coastal Commission to do the following, blah, 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 you know, and the seawall issue, this part here has never had a problem. And when Van was here, I asked him, he said, we could, this is structurally able to add some more height to it if we need to, for this portion here in front of this building. So I just, you know, I can't say anymore, but I really do think that we need to move forward, try to get a hotel online as soon as we can, and it would help, a hotel operating here would, it would be symbiotic to benefit any merchants that come on Palmetto, and the merchants on Palmetto would benefit whatever businesses are in the hotel. So that's my thoughts.
Deirdre?
Well, I'm not disagreeing, and I don't think anybody up here, I don't know about Mary, but I don't think anybody's disagreeing that there's, I think there's no doubt, we all want a hotel. And maybe can we say that the city hears that plea for, you know, trying to do what we can to push things forward, if we can get an EIR on this site ahead of the other things in our general plan, and maybe approve that section of the general plan first so we can go to the Coastal Commission and start that process sooner? Is, can we amend the action tonight to sort, say something like that, to support what I think I'm hearing this evening, instead of, you know, making this like one of our top 10 priorities? I mean, what is going to be, if we make this a top priority this year, what is going to be different from last year? We already, in the first two months of 2019, have made, have pushed our city planning out six months, given the new marijuana ordinance adjustments that we want, that's the first thing. Now we've got RV, we've got homeless, I mean, this, none of this is new, and I think the hotel thing is also not new, so let's say we're dedicated to making it happen, or as early as possible, in the general plan update, if we can, if that's a possibility. Can we amend the action tonight to say something like that?
Well, I guess what's challenging is that if it's the councils, the majority of the council directs us to focus on the entitlements of this site, that triggers very specific project implementation steps. It triggers an RFP for a consultant to do that work, it triggers the council, you know, refining the scope of the project description, hiring the consultant to prepare the technical documents after that, that will determine what level of additional environmental review for the site is necessary, whether it's an addendum to the previous environmental review or new. So there's very specific things that a planner needs to manage and focus on, and they're not going to be able to do a lot of the other, you know, projects that they're currently focused on. And again, going back, if the council really wants to consider this, I think we need to work together and bring back more specifically what it does to our workload, you know, planning's workload and city manager's office workload for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then in that mix, in a couple of weeks, council has goal setting, we're preparing for priorities for next year, so we analyze, you know, how that plays into it as well. So I can't, again, you know, the dollar amount can be taken from the unallocated general fund balance of $100,000 to pay for that contract if necessary, but it's trying to figure out what does it do to the rest of our workload, and is that, is that worth the, you know, six-month gain in time?
So.
Submissions to the Coastal Commission for entitlements.
Yeah, so then I have a question around that. So the group that we contracted with to help with our general plan update, Diet and Batia?
Yeah, Diet and Batia.
Their role in this is what?
Well, they, so, they, their scope is not to focus specifically and separately on this potential hotel site and all of the review and work for that. Their scope is broader, which includes this hotel site. So I don't know if Diet and Batia could carve out a specific focus on this while moving that other stuff forward.
So that, that's why I asked that question, to see if maybe we can get that question answered, if Diet and Batia can make this more of a priority, or if we were to come up with a priorities in our general plan, maybe this could be up there. And then my second, I don't know if that's a question or a statement, if you want to respond to that. Tina, you seem like you might want to.
Well, I'd have to talk to them to see what that, your request would entail. I can say that any action on the site is going to require CEQA coverage, and so that is something that is definitely going to need to be carved, carved out and away from the overall CEQA document, and could be a larger cost, it's not as simple.
Okay, and that's complete and utter planning time as well, right? Yeah.
And I would just add that even in the simplest form of what you're asking, at best, yes, they could perhaps prioritize, but it definitely would require a different scope of work, because that's not how, and I think it's fair to say, more costs. I don't know how much.
Okay.
But it would definitely be more.
Okay, thanks. So then the only other thing I'd say, and I'll be done on this subject, is that, council, we can make this a priority if we want, we can basically do anything and ask staff to do anything we want this evening, but I want you to really think about what you're asking them to absolutely redirect about, given what we've already tasked them with and what we're about to task them with in March.
Mary?
I really appreciate the conversation and all the questions that have been asked, some of them I had myself, so they were asked and answered, and I would just, I would recommend accepting the recommended action. I just wanted to add that I would also like the opportunity to, in the future, review and discuss the criteria for the RFP, specifically the labor requirement, so I just wanted to make sure that was on the record there, but I'd be ready to accept the recommended action.
Okay, I have one. Some of these items are administrative items, like abandon the right-of-way and the lot mergers. Can those items, I mean, I know that every single thing we ask for takes time, and I know that those take time too, but without the updates, can we do those specific items?
I believe we can. Those are all, those two items are public works items, and so I would be speaking out of turn, but I believe that you are correct, that they are more administrative in nature.
There's no legal reason we couldn't do that.
Okay. I'd like that to.
So if we did, if we did the entitlement of the hotel concurrently with the specific plan, then all of these items that you have here under required entitlements on page 8A, required entitlements, all those are going to have to be done even in a specific plan, correct?
Well, not one and two, right?
So this item 8A was the entitlement page, that this is taken straight from the RFP. So this is telling?
The RFP for the specific plan?
Or RFQ, excuse me, for the proposals for this site.
Okay.
So the items five and six would be done by a developer, once they came onboard, but, and then any additional CEQA that may be needed. But the items one, two, three, and then four could be complete, is what we're saying could be completed by the city.
Independent of a specific plan, correct? Except with the update to the general, well, we already have a specific plan for this site that would need to be updated if we went to hotel only, right?
Right. These would need to be completed, and whether or not it's separately by the city for just this site or with the specific plan is up to the council's direction, but they, these things need to be completed for the site.
But the coast, the developer, if we get entitlements for this piece of property... But the coast, the developer, if we get entitlements for this piece of property separately from the Coastal Commission, then, and our LCP has been sent to the Coastal Commission to be, for review and hopefully approval, then the coastal development permit would not need to be done, correct?
It would still need to be done, but it, it would be a city approval.
Okay.
Just like a coastal development permit is now.
Right, right. Because the, the issue I have is everything seems to be going here and moving consecutively instead of concurrently. And it just eats up time that we need to get some revenue into the city.
Right.
Okay? And I think, I just don't understand why we can't have this stuff done concurrently and move the revenue generation portion of the specific plan to where it's needed, and that's upfront. Okay? And that's the biggest issue I have, is everything seems to be consecutively instead of concurrently. I mean, when you have a horse race, all the horses are released at the same time. I mean, why can't, they don't let one go first, okay? It just is, you know, I just think the town needs revenue. And if we want to do any sort of homeless program or anything to that nature, we don't have the revenue to do now. And I would vote no. Okay? I mean, as simple as that. Okay? Anything we do now for any sort of human services has to be grant-funded. And if the ERAF is being used to balance the budget, we certainly can't make a donation to the Resource Center. Okay? And so, I mean, I, to me, I just think if the state, we need to provide services to the citizens of Pacifica. If we don't have the revenue, we cannot provide the citizens the basics, the basic needs, police, fire, and public works, if we don't have revenue. Simple as that. And that's the choice.
If, if I may just add, the, you know, concurrent versus consecutive, in the, in the concurrent effort approach, what's added in there is the duplication or the duplicative. So, we're, I believe it's the case that we have to take a general plan update to the Coastal Commission for the site specifically and the LCP update. And then we'd also have to do that again in the larger processes, take the general plan update and the local coastal plan update to the Coastal Commission. So, in the end, going back to sort of trying to distill this down, in the end, what you have is a, you know, maybe a six-month difference in the process. And, and that's the question that the council is grappling with, is, is that worth the, and it's, it's, time is very important. And as you said, the revenues, the revenue stream, the future revenue stream, six months is an important amount of revenue in the future, is critical. Is that worth the delay that it would cause for staff time available to work on other projects? And, and maybe what's necessary is for, is for us to come back with really more of an analysis about what that impact is before making this ...
Yes or no question. If the specific plan is done for this project, wouldn't that also be part of the general plan and the specific plan for Sharp Park Neighborhood? Yes or no?
I am not following the question.
Okay. The general, the specific plan and general plan update being sent to the local Coastal Commission. This project and this area would be included in that, correct?
When you say this project, are you talking about...
Where you're sitting today, this building.
The hotel.
This hotel.
Project, yeah.
Possibly. Okay? This is part of the specific plan, correct?
This, this site?
Yes.
Would be, yes. It's part of the larger specific plan.
Okay. So, the work you're saying that needs to be done is already going to be, needed to be done to send it to the general plan update for the local coastal plan because it's, it could just be folded in to the other one. Because you're already going to be doing this.
Well, let me ask Director Waremeister about that because it's not, it's, I think there's a, there's a duplication of work there because you have to take this project and submit this project to the Coastal Commission. And then you have to take the larger project and then send that to the Coastal Commission for approval as well.
And, and in order for a specific plan, just for this site to occur, then it goes back to, we're going to have to redirect the resources of...
I understand, but directing the resources now for this project are resources that are going to have to be used again for the specific plan, for the area-specific plan, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
So, you're going to be doing these, these, the efforts you put into this are efforts that are going to be going towards the specific plan for the entire area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, what we're talking about is a separate application to the Coastal Commission for this. But the SEQA, the abandon the right-of-way, and everything else that we're saying here is going to have to be done for the areas, the Sharp Park specific plan already. So, therefore, this is an effort that's going to help you achieve the final goal that's going to be due in 2020 or ending in 2020, correct?
Yes. But I, I, I think, and, you know, and maybe Director Waremeister may want, because this is, I'm sort of getting into planning issues, but the way I see it, just from a legal review, let's just say, what I would be reviewing is, we're going to be reviewing this specific project for this specific plan solely. We're also going to get requests to review a larger general plan that is going to include this. So, we're going to have two requests. So, it, it, you're going to be having two issues that are related. It's, it's just going to create more work.
But one part, one of this, this is going to be part of the other one.
No, I think, I think that's where, if I could make an attempt at this, is that there, there's a duplication because an environmental review process is about, you know, the, the public hearings for review, the council meetings for review, and those are going to all be duplicated. So, while some of the content or analysis of the site will just fold into the larger one, the process, the attorney review, the public comment process is all duplicated in that. And that, that's where, you know, some of the trade-off is.
And you are right. There, there will be an overlap. But the reality is, we will have two separate projects. And each project will have its own separate definition and its own separate process.
But if we can get a hotel built here one year earlier, we will have whatever we, in the bank, we will have whatever we sell this piece of property for, and 900 estimated, $900,000 in transit occupancy tax if we can get this hotel here built one year earlier. And the Coastal Commission can delay it for a year. You submit the application July 1st. They can say, we're not going to give that till Ju, July 1st, 2020 or 2021. If you submit it in Ju, July 1st, 2021, they can say, we're not going to give you an answer to July 2022. And that's one year. We don't have that check in the bank and $900,000 of transit occupancy tax.
And, and again, I want to go back to the, the difference in timeline between the two processes is estimated at six months. And so, there would be a six-month difference. And then the variable that we're not working with tonight is, what is the impact to all of the other planning tasks? So, for example, processing other private hotel developments may be delayed because there's not planning resources to focus on that. We haven't done that full analysis yet.
Well, I'll let somebody make a motion. I beat the horse, he's dead out there.
I'll make a motion.
Who's making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to follow the current process, to update the general plan and local coastal plan, and complete the Sharp Park specific plan to prepare the 2212 Beach Boulevard site for a successful RFQP process.
I will second that.
Did you give me the, did you read the one that's actually on the staff report?
Yep, I think so.
Okay, let me just read that.
Want me to read one on the front page?
Do you have a question about it?
Front page, yeah, same thing. Says the same thing.
Page 87.
Yeah, I read both. I, they're the same.
Brad, I, I trust you read it. I just wanted to read it.
Any discussion? Do we want to clarify what a yes and a no means?
Yeah, because what I'm reading here, follow the current process, update the plan, and complete the Sharp Park specific plan to prepare the 2212 Beach Boulevard for a successful RFQP process. Well, it sounds like if I'm voting no, I don't want to prepare the general plan and local coastal plan. That's what it sounds like to me.
But I think what you're, but you, but what you really are saying is that you don't, that you think we should actually continue on and try to make it
Yes.
A priority now and separate and aside from the local coastal plan and the general plan update. So, that's what a no vote would mean?
Yeah.
That clear?
A no vote would mean, for me, would mean, I want the hotel to be prioritized and move on a faster track than the specific plan. But I am not voting against the specific plan. I want that clear.
Right.
And we had a motion and a second, so we're voting.
We had a second, okay.
Yes, we did. Um, sorry, that passes three to two. And it is 9:41, and that concludes our meeting.